No one, and I'd like to open the Board of County Commissioner meeting for March 5th, 2024. Mr. Christopher is almost in the room, and I am here, and Mr. Anderson is on Zoom today. So we are all three in session. And shall we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, or wait a second for Mr. Christopher? Shall we just go ahead? Okay. Do you see him coming in the hallway yet? Okay, let's just move forward. Let's just start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I noted you were here, Mr. Christopher. And Mr. Anderson is online today. I would entertain an approval of the business agenda with three add-ons.
I move to be approved of this agenda with three. All right. I move that we approve the business agenda with three add-ons. One is a discussion on the Lead Steering Committee under new business, a discussion on the coordinate position under old business, and a discussion on the public defense proposed revised standards for incident defense and caseload limits at 11:00 a.m.
I will second the motion.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, business agenda passes. Approval of the Commissioner meeting minutes.
I can make a motion, or we can have discussion first. A discussion on one of them. However you would like it, if you'd like to motion before discussion, or you'd like discussion before the motion.
Let's make the motion and then go into discussion.
With that, I will move to approve the meeting minutes for February 6th, 2024.
I will second the motion.
Okay, motion in a second, discussion.
Yes, on that particular meeting minutes, there was no discussion of the, or no documentation of the discussion that took place on the White Salmon School Board letter. There's no mention that we even had a discussion. So I would like to edit those minutes with that we did have a discussion. Don't need to be detailed. I just think that's important to have in the minutes.
Great. What about the February 13th? Are we going to make a second motion?
I have no problems with February.
Are we fine with staff writing that up? And do we want to wait, wait a week to see what staff has? What do you want to do, Commissioner?
If, if my seatmates are fine with a friendly amendment, I would just, I guess I'd say alter my motion to approval of the February 6th, 2024 minutes with noting to staff to make a small addition in there that there was discussion on the White Salmon School Board letter.
Yeah, I can't approve unless I know what's going to be.
Right. Basic. Is it just basic that we had a discussion? Go ahead and read it.
It says Commissioner Christopher proposed an add-on to the agenda regarding a discussion of the letter received by White Salmon Valley's school district. Chairman Zoller stated it could not be discussed due to litigation.
I wouldn't even need it to be that detailed.
Simply that we had a discussion about the letter.
It's all I'm asking.
And are you good with that, Jake?
I could hardly hear Leanne, but what I could hear sounded okay.
Okay. Just a simple statement saying that it was added to the record that we had that discussion.
It's all I'm asking.
Okay. That works for me.
I will.
So that would be my motion with that simple amendment.
Okay.
I will accept a friendly amendment.
Okay. He was seconded by friendly amendment. We're good to go.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Commissioner meeting minutes from February 13th, 2020, 2024 as presented.
Do we have a second? Okay. Great. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, hearing none, the February 13th minutes pass. Thank you very much. So we are to that portion of our meeting for a public comment. Just a reminder for those in the room, please raise your hand and when called come forward and state your name and where you're from for the record. And the same for those online. When you're called upon on Zoom, please be sure to state your name and where you're from. So seeing no one in the room this morning, it's a very quiet morning. Do we have anyone online?
Chairwoman Zoller?
Yes.
May I point out, I'd just like to remind everyone to not comment on anything that we have a hearing on later today. That would be Title 15 and Title 16.
Correct. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anyone on Zoom? It's a very quiet morning. Here we are. Good morning, Sheri.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. You know, I want to pick up where I left off last week. We're talking about under canvas and the fact that our Board of County Commissioners can withdraw the litigation they have ongoing with the people. And I've spoke many times about how I don't feel it's correct for our government body that is to ensure the safety, health, and general welfare of the people to use their legislative quasi judicial whatever. And I'm going to have to say, I just actually not too long ago found out what quasi means, and it means you're acting like. You're acting like, I'm acting like, I could act like Cinderella. That doesn't mean I have magic slippers. But so anyway, the people, you're supposed to be representing the people, but yet you've used your power to continue to fight in a legal setting against the people who have proven without a doubt that this placement of this 95 units, a restaurant, a spa, and all these transit, hundreds of transient tourists using Oak Ridge Road with school bus children, with cattle, with the people who live there. And let's not forget, there is no evacuation plan. There is, let me say this again, to all the people out there that fight against their government when they don't want to die. There is no evacuation plan because the road cannot sustain it. People have invested their personal money to try to get the government, our government, to stop doing this to us. It's not right because you, the government, the corporation, whatever you're acting like, quasi, you guys are using our money to fight legally against us. And that should make every taxpayer very upset. And now you have another legal thing going on in Snowden. And you just use your powers to do what you want for your under canvas friends, whatever friends you have going on. You don't care if it endangers the safety, health, and the general welfare of even children now. You have evidence in front of you that the children use this road. The children, hi, when do we ignore the children? Okay, it's gone far enough. I said last week, you have the power to withdraw litigation on the under canvas today, right now. Christopher, Commissioner Christopher, you said you made a motion to withdraw this litigation. That is your power to do so. It can end today. The expenses can end today. The nightmare can end today. And if Christopher, Commissioner Christopher, if you are serious, make a motion again. Stand up. Do the right thing for the people. Do the right thing for the children. Make your seatmates see how dangerous this is and how wasteful it is to spend county taxpayers' money fighting to put something in place that can kill children and people. Make the motion, Commissioner Christopher. Stand up for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Great. And seeing no one in the room ready for a public comment, I'll ask again for Zoom. Anybody else want to comment today? 4098.
Yeah, hi, good morning. Dennis White, 367 Oak Ridge Road, White Salmon. I have three questions for you today, and I would like answers to these questions during your response to public comments if possible. Question number one, who pays for the hearing examiner's services? For Harry's CIPA, CUP, or zone change appeal? Is it the applicant, appellate, or taxpayer, or some combination thereof? I've asked Lori Anderson several weeks ago, but as yet she has not come up with an answer. If you do not know, or are unsure, please provide this info to me in writing at 367 Oak Ridge Road, White Salmon. Question number two. At the February 6th board meeting, the chair deferred to the prosecutor for an opinion over whether the board should have a public discussion regarding the letter from the White Salmon Valley School District. As you know, this letter raised safety concerns regarding bus transported schoolchildren on Oak Ridge Road in the context of under canvases anticipated increase in traffic. Has the prosecutor rendered an opinion yet? If not, when might this happen? And keep in mind, if you can't discuss, how can you respond to the letter? Question number three. Is the board going to continue to have the prosecutor defend the county in the UC litigation? Yes or no? If yes, consider this. The prosecutor will not represent my neighborhood or my community. A vast majority there are opposed to under canvas. He will not represent the citizens across the county. Under canvas has no popular county support. He will not represent the school district. You have a letter from the district stating its concern. He will not be representing Commissioner Christopher. He has motioned to keep the prosecutor home. I believe he will not be representing the facts regarding the physical condition of Oak Ridge Road. Our engineering studies have debunked the argument that far excess road standards are adequate to meet the criteria for a CUP. So just who or what will the prosecutor represent in court with under canvas? Under canvas failed in its traffic impact study to study road geometrics as it should have. That failure has led to the school district's concerns over road safety for staff and students. In light of this, would under canvas now sue the county for not showing up to court to defend its CUP decision? I don't believe so. These comments are entirely mine, and I believe them to be, I believe them to be true.
Thank you, Dennis.
Want a clarification? Did you, did you get the third question? I didn't.
No, it kind of, it kind of cut off there at the very last. Dennis, could you, if you're still there, could you please expand on your third question for Mr. Christopher?
Or more specific?
Well, we're about, we're about to my question, beginning?
No, just the last one.
I got the first question, I got the second question, but I'm taking notes and I didn't get the third question.
Repeat my third question?
Yes, you're still cutting out, but I believe that's the question is repeat your third question.
Okay. Question number three. Is the board going to continue to have the prosecutor defend the county in the UC litigation? Yes or no?
Thank you, sir.
Is that it?
That's it.
That'll do it.
Thank you very much. Okay. So anyone else on Zoom this morning? 2662.
Hello, Commissioners, this is Tracy from Lisle.
Good morning.
And I'm not sure why, but it took me three calls and seven minutes to even get put in on the meeting agenda. So I thought it was going to be past the place that I could comment. Hopefully you don't start my time until after I said that. Anyway, so I have a lot of things to say today. For one, address problems. It is, it is becoming unbearable. I spoke with, I, well, let me back up here. I sent Nathan with Public Works a email on February 14th that said, on your parcel map, Clickatet Avenue is not located in Murdoch where the property is. You have it located in, in the town of Clickatet. He wrote me back and said that Clickatet Avenue is actually in Clickatet, and he gave me Latlong coordinates. I wrote him back and I said, no, the parcel, and I gave him the parcel number, is, is in Murdoch, not Clickatet. There, according to the tax assessor, there are two addresses, 421 Clickatet Avenue in Lisle and 421 Clickatet Street in Lisle. Those are the only two in the county that have 421 Clickatet. And Nathan wrote back, well, that's not what we show. So yesterday I called Director Hunter, Jeff Hunter, and I talked to him about the situation. And I said, look, you know, your map is wrong. He said, no, it's not. You're wrong. I said, Jeff, let's not be immature here. Let's be professional and let's talk about what is real. And so I gave him the property, the parcel address, which I can give you because it is public information so that you can look it up yourself. It is, one second here. One more page. Okay, it is 0213-1653-000100. So I gave Jeff Hunter that parcel number, and he says, huh, well, that's not 421 Clickatet Avenue. I said, it is. He says, no, because it's in Clickatet. I said, Jeff, that, that is the parcel. I know the lady, and it's exact address is mine except this avenue. He said, well, they have a P.O. box. I said, okay, well, a lot of people have a P.O. box. He says, well, they have a P.O. box at Dallasport. I said, so? He says, so that's not Clickatet Avenue? And I fought with him for 15 minutes or a half an hour over whether that is Clickatet Avenue or not. I then gave him the Latlongs, which is for Clickatet Avenue, 45.657-121.191. He says, oh, well, I can't put the Latlongs in, so I guess that doesn't matter. I said, well, Jeff, this is a serious problem. Every time Clickatet Avenue leaves the, the database in the, in the, in the, in the county to be located where it is, I start getting mail with Clickatet Avenue. It's like clockwork. I know when I get something in Clickatet Avenue, I look at the parcel map, and it's either in Golden Dale or Clickatet. Well, what are you guys doing with people's properties? Just a minute. What are you doing with people's properties?
I'm sorry, but your, your time has run out, but thank you. We heard your issue on the addresses. Is there anyone else on Zoom this morning? Jean?
Hey, good morning, everybody. Just had a couple of things to touch bases with you on. Wanted to see if I could get some follow-up on the conversations over improved communications as far as notifications for the public when, you know, CUPs or when rezoning. If any of those processes have been, at least the conversation, if that's been started. And I appreciate that. Also, Commissioner Zoller, I look forward to seeing you tomorrow at the Snowden Community Council meeting. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on Zoom this morning? 7211.
Greg Wagner with CEES. With regards to the previous lady speaking about notifications, the county has the, on the main page, notify me. And you go in there and you can set what departments you want to have notifications from. And I've been on it for years and rarely get a notification. So I don't know if it fully functions or not. And I know that I spoke to this several weeks ago, that the Title 15, 16, whatever's coming up, rezones and all that, there's no information on the county website until I brought it up, and then it ends up on the Commissioner's page. And then the building department puts in information about Title 15 or 16. So how can the citizen participate in the decisions of the county when they're unaware of what's going on in the county? You know, this is a failure, I'm sorry to say, of the Commissioners. You are the leaders of the county, and if you want us to participate in what goes on in the county, you got to let us know what's happening. So somehow you folks need to start making sure that this gets on the county website so people know what's going on. And I'd like to say, as far as the under canvas, that's been a big debacle from day one. I participated in the 14 hours of the hearing examiners and all, I testified. And I, I thought for sure the hearing examiner would not allow under canvas to be permitted because of all the facts that were brought up. But he being the outside guy, and we didn't keep it local for local control, like Mr. Anderson always says, because he had to recuse himself. The, the hearing examiner sided on the side of under canvas. And now you can see what's happening. It's going to be a disaster for the people that live out there so that the corporation can profit. And you all need to withdraw from this and get the county out of it. Because you're just, it's just not where we need to be. You need to be defending the citizens, not the corporations. Now, several weeks ago, there was questions about the, asking the Lori Anderson about the Commissioners' roles in CIPA. And you didn't understand the CIPA process or your roles in it. And then Jake said, well, we need lessons. So obviously you all don't know how to handle CPAs, and you're going to have a CIPA come before you, maybe James Dean rezone. Are you going to have to hand this out to a hearing examiner now because you've already admitted you don't know how to handle CPAs? So there's a big problem there. Are you receiving training so that we can keep it in the county and keep it local for local control? So that you need to get training so you know how to handle CPAs? You know? This is, this is just more problems in our county. When, when are we going to take and resolve these? Instead of just, as everybody says, kicking the can down the road, we'll get to it next week. Next week comes and we've forgotten all about it. Nothing gets resolved. It's just totally dysfunctional. We need a government that functions for the people, not to be dysfunctional. Now, the one other question is, on Title 15 and 16, when will the deadline be? I know, just want to know when the deadline will be for written comment. That's all I want to know.
Yeah. It's time, and I'm sorry, they are on our agenda today. Thank you. Anyone in the room this morning? We have one visitor.
I didn't ask, I just want to know when written comment was going to be.
Could we, is there anyone else on Zoom this morning? Don't see anyone? One more, couple more seconds, and then we'll move on with the day. Okay. Thank you. Oh. Okay. Okay. So I guess we'll move in to see if the Commissioners have any comments.
I guess I will go first since I'm in the room. Let Commissioner Anderson go first next week. To Sheri, you keep pushing for me to make a motion. I did make a motion. The motion had a split vote. I'm not going to make the motion every single week. That's like a child throwing a temper tantrum. My motion and my vote is always here if the board changes to choose its vote to have consensus, my vote is here. To Mr. White, who pays for the hearing examiner? It is my understanding that on the larger projects, we have a an agreement with them that they pay all costs associated with. So technically, they should be the ones that are paying for hearings examiners, and they should be the ones being billed for hearings examiners. And if you find if that's not being the case, please let us know, and we will correct said mistake, if that was ever a mistake. Your third question was if the board is going to continue to prosecute, and I kind of answered that on the Sheri question. Currently, we have a split vote. If the vote changes, then the opinion might change. Tracy, we, we've continued to hear your complaint on the addressing system. All I can say is staff has looked through it and has found no issues. If the postal service is getting confused between Clickatet Avenue and Clickatet Street, we have procedures for the general public to request a name change of a road, which is the, the simplest part of it. You can find the updated road name change procedure in the Title 12 documents that we just passed shortly ago that spell out how you can request getting a name change of a road. Jean, notifications on CUP? You know, after we had that discussion, I went online because I am signed up and was signed up as a citizen to hear planning commission notifications, but not CUP. So I went on to try to figure out how to get that set up. And even with an email from staff that kind of went over how to do that, it still took me well over half an hour to figure out how to do that. I will continue to call for the, in my opinion, our website is very slow, very old, very outdated, and very hard to operate for the general public. It is my belief that we need to update our website to be more accessible for the public, more user-friendly for the public. And I'm looking forward to eventually getting a second vote on that where we can actually update our website. Three years now, still there. My vote is still to upgrade the website. We'll wait for a second vote. Mr. Wagner, I just want to clarify, I never said that I did not know how to handle CPAs. I do know how to handle CPAs. I have taken CIPA training. So I'm assuming your remarks were not meant towards me. With that, I would like to thank everyone for commenting. It's always nice to hear what the public has to say. And occasionally we get those new things like the website stuff that might actually help us get across the fishing line, finish line. So thank you all.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, I don't believe it's appropriate for us to comment on anything that's impending litigation. So while I wish I could say things, but we can't. I would say to Jean, the communications and notifications, I do think there is room for improvement on there. I think there is room for training for our department to ensure that they are putting more rather than less information on the website. And that can be a workshop item that we can discuss with our department. I actually was around when we went to Civic Plus from the old website. Many, many jurisdictions use Civic Plus. It's actually fairly affordable. It's fairly drag and drop. It does take training. We don't have a full IT staff like many of the larger jurisdictions do to fully use and utilize that. What we've done is, is we've parceled out to each department a lot of their work on the website. I went through the training originally when we got it. It can be difficult for people who don't have web experience. But I think we, we need to do better, and I think we can do better. And I, and with the new planning director, I think we can look at that programmatically so that people get the email notifications and on the email lists they need to be on. I think we have the capability. Mr. Wagner, thanks for pointing out the notification system that you've been on for years. I would also like to point out, like Title 15 and anything else that we're updating code or ordinance, that does go in the newspaper record. We have, we follow the requirements in order to hold public hearings. We are following the law. And I, I'm sorry, but when I was talking about the CIPA, I was not mentioning that neither of my seatmates did not understand CIPA or had not taken the online training. I was just saying it would be a good idea to have training and continued training when there's things that are going to come up. I can also mention the Clickatet County is kind of an outlier. Most jurisdictions, and I had this conversation at the Lawsec meeting on Wednesday night, most jurisdictions have moved away from having quasi judicial hearings by the Board of County Commissioners or the council members. And they all use hearings examiners because things have gotten so complex over the years. And, and for that reason, Clickatet County, we always kind of walk and tread our own path. And we still believe in, you know, that belief of local planning, local decision-making. And that has always been our goal. I talked with many of the Commissioners, you know, about the reasons why they went from one form to the other. And a lot of it comes down to your findings of fact. And when you have And when you have three commissioners that may have, uh, separate opinions, creating your findings of fact between three people that you'd have to do in public can be exceedingly difficult. Um, I still believe, uh, in local planning and I also still believe that, um, local planning is not dead. And so for the, the smaller things, um, that are not going to involve attorneys and litigation that we don't think, I still want to have those options available so that, that the Board of County Commissioners can be the hearing body. Um, but I also firmly understand why all the other jurisdictions went away from it. With that, uh, Madam Chair, I'll go back.
Thank you. So I'll keep my comments brief. Um, notifications, I can tell you notification and website. Um, different departments in our staff, uh, have spoke to me about it in the last week. And so I know there are people working on it and they're working through, uh, the technicalities too with the IT department. So we're, we're working on updating something in that that is not off our radar. So don't think we've forgotten that. Uh, and it is important. It is important to the public and we see it and we hear you. Um, so moving forward, uh, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda with nine items.
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve the consent agenda with nine items.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Madam Chair would move that we pay the accounts payable warrants in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. And the payroll benefit warrants the amount of zero dollars to the date ending March fourth, twenty twenty-four.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Uh, thank you very much. So we're two department updates and we have with us today, our new planning director, Scott Edelman. I don't think you're getting out of it, Lori. Well, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Good morning, commissioners. And I want to thank Lori for a lot of things. Um, she's letting me off the hook today. She put together the reports yesterday was my first day. Um, so what I'd like to do, if it's okay, is introduce myself to, to the public really. You've met me. Um, and then Lori is going to give the report, uh, for one last time. Um, I want to thank her for that work and for the work that she and the team have done to keep things going. Uh, from the time I interviewed and started thinking about this job. So thank you, Lori, for all that you've done and for welcoming me. Um, my name is Scott Edelman. I grew up in what I considered a rural, small town. Um, it was, uh, my home was surrounded by farms about half mile outside of Nampa, Idaho, twenty-four thousand people. That was my small town. I didn't know what a small town was obviously because I met a girl in college in that same town. Uh, who was from Gold No Washington. Uh, Emily Cochrane and, uh, fuck. It's a big day for me. Fell in love with that girl. Fell in love with her family. Fell in love with this community. Over the following years, got married in nineteen ninety-eight in this town. Uh, we moved to North Carolina, spent four years there while she was a high school teacher. I, uh, um, uh, went to graduate school for planning at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill as a Tar Heel. Then we moved back to central Oregon because, uh, Emma's older sister lived there at that time. Uh, during that time, since two thousand and two, I've been a associate planner for the city of Redmond. I was planning director for city of Primeville while they, um, went through, uh, acquiring the data centers. That was an exciting time. I spent eight years working for the state, um, land use program, Department of Land Conservation and Development. And most recently I was the community development director for Jefferson County, a county surprisingly like, uh, this one. About twenty-five thousand people, uh, similar size, east to west, uh, orientation. Um, and then, um, most recently I got started here, um, and I'm very pleased to be here. Excited to work with the planning team and, and this community gets known even better. And I like to call myself resident, but I'm right now a resident of the Ponderosa. So a few days a week.
Thank you so much.
Lori, thank you again for being willing to lead them through this. I'd just be stumbling through it if it was me.
No. And thank you commissioners and everyone for getting Scott and he's here on his second day. We're so excited. Well, no, you, you don't realize.
You didn't scare him away on the first day?
I didn't scare him away. No, no, he, and.
He's not allowed to leave or retire or ever go anywhere. He doesn't know that yet, but there's a chain attached to his desk. So.
I'll, I'll sign that contract. That's okay.
So just going through the update of things from last week and a lot of it's continuing on from previous weeks. Um, planning commission, we're working on the critical areas review. We'll be getting information out to the planning commission members later this week, kind of a side by side comparison of chapter one of the existing C, CAO to the draft CAO. And thankfully Scott's going to take over the lead on the CAO and, um, I'll still be there, don't worry, but, um, we'll progress on that. The request for proposals, last week I did make contact with the, um, firm Harper Hoff Peterson and Regillis, and I probably pronounced that incorrectly. And then Scott and I will be following up with more details and contracts and so on and so forth. Um, the Wilson Monroe rezone in the Snowden area, I had a verbal message from the prosecutor's office to proceed. So I'm trying to fill Scott in on some of that and it'll involve scheduling with the county commissioners to, um, have a hearing on the CIPA appeal as well, combined with the rezone and public notices and stuff will be necessary. So it's not going to happen like tomorrow or next week. So there's definitely a process to go through. But we are, um, in contact with the applicant and the appellant and as soon as we get more information, we'll get that out to them as well. There's just kind of not enough time in our day right now, but soon there'll be more time. Moving on to the Rambo, Rummel Lambert conditional use permit, they did withdraw their one permit and submitted a new one. We'll get that routed today and, um, their new conditional use permit will not have to. It'll be under the new title twelve standards. So basically they won't have to do the traffic study.
Is that the one that we received the staff email from that, uh, about charging and that we normally charge on the new application and don't? Is that the same one that we?
Well, it's the one we talked about last week and, um, we, we don't have a refund policy and, and all that. And I think it'll come up at a workshop um, in a couple of weeks. I don't know the exact date. But more importantly, um, for the applicants, they did not have to, or are not going to have to hire a traffic engineer at the tune of at least six thousand dollars to do that traffic study. So they were more than willing to withdraw their original application, resubmit Friday, um, under March first, which is when title, the new title twelve came into effect. So we're proceeding with that. Um, the Port of Clickitac, they have their binge in point shoreline substantial development and conditional use that's going forth and will be going to the planning commission in April. The Port of Clickitac, this is in Dalzport, they'll be, um, they've submitted a CIPA checklist for it's on lot thirty-eight and the Port Dalzport. They call it DIP, Dalzport Industrial Park. Um, and it's for a phase development. In the end, they'll have a twenty thousand square foot building. First phase is for ten thousand, one hundred square feet, which triggers the CIPA. So we'll be doing the CIPA on that hopefully later this week. Um, the James Dean aggregate resource overlay will be coordinating with Scott who will will figure a path forward on that. And we have the Smith RV Park conditional use CIPA binding site plan that hopefully we can get that routed in the next week or two as well. Uh, we have, we have a lot of things to get routed in the next few days or next week or two. So we're, we're going forth, doing good things. And we have our new leader. So very, very exciting. And then we do have a lot of pending projects that we'll be working on and Scott will get up to speed and all will be good. So there's the, the quick rundown.
Thank you so much. Any questions?
Uh, no questions. I'm sure it'll take time to get your bearings and, and hit the gun running, but, um, you'll be fine. I, I, I've talked to you enough to know you'll be fine.
Well, I'm surrounded with good people, so we will be.
He'll be more than fine. I have all the faith in your, you and your department. You have some great gals to work with. Jake, do you have any questions?
I would just like to say thank you very much, Scott, for coming on board. Uh, looking forward to working with you. I've got a million, um, things I'd like to talk to you about, but I'll do it when you have a chance to settle down.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I, I want to go in and sit down and chew your ear off, but, um, that, that doesn't let you get things done. So uh, I'm going to give you some breathing room and if you need to contact me, feel free. Uh, and then, and once you're here and kind of warmed up and then you'll see me more. Um, but, uh, I do want to thank Lori for stepping up and, and getting us to where we are today because that, that was a, uh, that was a heavy burden if you're not, not used to that and, and being the, you get to answer all the questions. You don't get to just pass them up the chain of command for somebody else to, to deal with. So I, I really appreciate it. I really do.
And she still had her own job to do.
Yeah, yeah. No, things were relatively painless for us when you were there. So I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Great.
Thank you.
We'll be seeing you. So Commissioner miscellaneous reports and comments. Mr. Christopher, would you like to go first? Do you have any, anything on your agenda you'd like to discuss? Uh, Jake? Miscellaneous reports or comments for commissioners? Uh, we have about ten minutes till Mr. Hunter's in the room.
Um, I added most things to the agenda, um, for the discussion, um, from our WAC meeting. So I can't think of anything, uh, off the top of my head that, that I have that we need to, um, add on top of that. There might be one. Just give me a couple of minutes.
Okay, that's perfect. I'll, I'll talk for a second or two and then if you come up with something, just let me know. Um, it isn't really a report, but it's just a comment. Um, it's about early childcare and of course that's always on a lot of people's minds in Clickitac County to move forward to find a way to do this. And I was invited to a meeting which I attended last week with Jill Burnett and Dan Spats from the other side of the river. Uh, they invited me because they look at it as a community thing, meaning both sides of the river. But they have a good start on an early childcare facility and education facility in the Dalles. And they're moving forward with it really, it's going really well. And I have high hopes that they're going to be able to accomplish it, um, within the like twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six timeframe. And it involves the old Chanaworth School that's been abandoned for quite some time. And they would be able to service, if my memory serves me correct from the meeting, up to two hundred and fifty participants. So it's going to be a great facility for both sides of the river. It's easy accessible to I eighty-four. Uh, it's in a good location for the city. Uh, and then we had further talks, of course, looking out for our side. I said, great, if you can pull this off and, and create this on your side, then I expect the same thing on our side. I want to move forward and, and they were a minimal to that, uh, talking about maybe putting it, since this will be on the east end, maybe putting it more towards the west end. So, so I have high hopes that childcare finally has some movement. So that was my favorite meeting of last week. Mr. Anderson, did you come up with anything else?
I did. Thank you. Sorry, I'm a little under the weather. Um, when I was in Olympia on Thursday, I was able to get a meeting with the healthcare authority. Um, to talk about, you know, the, the jail stuff, but we, in order to move forward, um, we needed credentialing, um, to move forward without patient treatment. And so we could get our Medicaid, you know, work with the Medicaid organization. Uh, Director Quinn had put in, uh, the application last fall. Um, we were, I think, close to a hundred and sixty days. She'd emailed them multiple times, never got a response back. And so the meeting I had with, um, the healthcare authority, um, I'm very, very happy to say we just got an email this morning that they processed our application and we are now credentialed. Um, so I'd just like to say thank you to Director Quinn and her staff. Um, this has been a long slog, but that is one more step for us to provide outpatient treatment services. Uh, the meeting with the healthcare authority went really, really well. Um, they're hoping to work with us. Um, uh, to get, uh, uh, what is it? Certified, um, uh, EHR, I think it's EHR software for, um, the, the jail and then also working, uh, with behavioral health. Um, their timelines were a lot longer, um, than, uh, what we're looking at. But we're trying to find a way, um, to use, um, what they have available for their capacity. Uh, grants to try to make some inroads and maybe be an early adopter. Um, it was a really positive, really, really positive meeting. Um, I can tell you like, uh, walking into the, that building, uh, was a lot like walking into the Department of Transportation building in DC. They feel like ghost towns. Um, most people are not back in the office. Uh, it's, uh, and so I don't know if it's the left hand not talking to the right, but, um, when you actually do can get a meeting with them, things move really fast. So I'm really, really excited about how that turned out.
This, Mr. Christopher, is any um, idea or indication or what the holdup was? I mean, it, we, was it nothing on our end? It was totally on their end, I'm assuming. Um, on why it took so long to process the application.
So the first thing they said is, is that they are swamped with work and, um, they're about six months out. Um, but you know, their first email said, please, it should take no longer than ninety days. Um, but he said they're six months out and I said, well, but you never respond to the emails. It's kind of weird. And they said, that's how swamped we are. Um, and so I don't know if they're having staffing issues as well. I would assume like every, everyone else they are. Um, but, um, when, you know, you talk, I talked with the section manager and he said, I'll, I'll put this to the top. I understand what you guys' issues are. We want to get you up and running. We're really sorry you have not had complex mental health services for, uh, two years in the county. Um, this is, you know, it's concerning to us. Um, I did mention though that, uh, working with, uh, Beacon, which is now Carle, Carleon, however you say it. Um, has been exceptional, uh, with the, uh, how fast we were able to stand up, um, the crisis services. And also working with the MCOs, um, those meetings have gone really well. Um, they really want us to get some, get, get outpatient treatment services stood up. Um, they had a really good conversation about the wraparound services. Um, so talking, you know, when people go into the jail and working with them while they're in the jail. Uh, we also had a good conversation, uh, about the, uh, is it eleven fifteen? Um, the issue where, so you go into jail and you lose your Medicaid the day you go into jail. Um, and, and so what should have cost five dollars for a shot, cost the county three thousand dollars for a shot. And so we had a good conversation about when that was going to take effect. Um, you know, so that when you go into jail, you'll be able to keep your Medicaid. And if you're in jail and you don't have insurance, we'll get you signed up for Medicaid. You know, when we look at the indigenous defense and the people that, that don't have the dollars. Um, and it's, it's a huge burden for our budgets and they definitely heard that. Um, they are shooting for January, uh, twenty twenty-five, but it might be more like July. And I said, well, um, well, you should see our, how much we're spending. And I said, you know, people go into jail, you're presumed innocent, you know, so why do they lose, why do they lose it? And we have to cover it. And they said, well, we know, that's why we're fixing it. And so, um, it's, I mean, it was positive on, on all accounts. Sorry, I'm rambling.
That's okay. Jake, I just want to say thank you very, very much for that. And I do hope a lot of our Zoom participants are still listening or those who have questions about, um, how county commissioners function. Uh, for me, so many times, um, it appears as though. Uh, for me, so many times, um, it appears as though uh people believe we have the role of a ruler. And we can just choose these things and command and, and get it. And we do not, we are actually just leaders. We're here to ensure that our departments are successful, that they can do the work for the people, that they can serve the people. And that we manage those budgets to get them there. So something like you did Jake, to walk that through for the health department and finally get a push on that. To get that approved and for the sheriff department, that's, that's crucial for us going forward. So I appreciate that work that you just did. Um, it's not easy. We have a thousand ropes tied to us that we have to deal with if we deal on one subject. It's an amazing process. Um, so anything else? You're, you're welcome. I think we have made, well, we're still close. Jeff, you have a, a few minutes, but you're here early. If, if our commissioners are done, we'll move forward. Thank you. Wait a minute, what, what's your time say? Nope, it says ten AM, so. You know how he is. And he's out of the room, so you can say that.
You gonna be in the office this afternoon, sir?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna come down and check. Or if we get out before lunch, way too early, I might do it then too.
Well, we'll make it fairly quick, so your wish is my command. So um, we've already done the consent agenda. We have no pay estimates. This week, uh crushing Badger Gulch quarry has been complete. Contractors moving over to Matson now. On the road design side, Sundale's out to bid. Project, our bid opening is March nineteenth. Liquid asphalt also went out to bid today. It's opening March nineteenth. So we have a few bid openings, March nineteenth. Keep everybody hot. The federal projects are moving forward. Um, and they're all in the design stage. Uh, the maintenance, what we're doing on the maintenance front, it's kind of this time of the year, we kinda clean up. After the winter and hopefully winter is over. So with that said, east end, we're cleaning dishes, grading and doing some pan brushing. On the west end, we're brushing, patching holes, uh removing some dead trees along the right away. And we fixing some damaged guardrail. Upcoming facilities, uh jail roof, we still have two punch list items. Hopefully we'll get those complete this week. Superior Court, we have two con, two small works contracts out to bid. Get work scheduled to start April fifth. Um, events, fire on the mountain, um, emergency management's using the um. Exhibit building this weekend for training and uh we start, our events start kicking on. Uh, Fuel Island, we're still working on the design, the consultant is, we wanna get that thing moving forward. Uh, auditors, HVAC installation is today. Project will be complete by the end of March. Um, HVAC contract is out to bid with a bid opening March eleventh. Storm damage, most of the work is complete. I don't know that the pay will, again, we will. I will bring you a report when we finalize everything on what the total cost was. Jail washer was supposed to be scheduled to be installed today, but the installer ended up getting hurt. Not here, someplace else, so they have to reschedule the installation.
Is this like a, a regular washing machine or is this some commercial industrial?
It's a, it's a commercial. Commercial and uh so we're hoping they have more than one installer. But we'll find out. And SADIS-PAS, the camera's scheduled to actually be worked on again this Thursday. And that will complete, I mean, the, the site's functioning and everything. All it is, is you don't, don't have camera feed. And that's it for the list this week. Very short.
So I haven't heard of any bugs in the matrix when it comes to SADIS. It's kinda went online and. Seems like it's been working fine with no glitches, which is uh surprising, but I'm very thankful for.
Nothing. Mr. Anderson, do you have anything for Mr. Hunter?
No, th- thank you, Jeff. Uh, you're doing a great job. Um, and I'm very glad, like Commissioner Christopher said, that there's no glitch in the matrix. For our uh last and final tower and so I'm glad we got it, got it right.
Right, well, that was an easy day.
It was, look at that. Didn't grind it.
Stick around and steal some of Rob's.
Oh, I'm giving Rob plenty.
Thank you. So Mr. Van Cleve, if you're ready early.
I'm always ready, never ready.
He knows that you needed more time.
Actually, I need less time today, but, but uh maybe. So um, I'll start off with the, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, actually, I wanna say something before we get started. I wanna echo what everybody has said about Lori Anderson. And the planning department staff. You know, they didn't fail. It didn't collapse. Um, but by sheer willpower, under Lori's interim leadership, they all kept doing their jobs. And I think that's highly commendable. Um, and I was glad to hear you commend her for that in the planning department. So it's uh, she did an amazing job.
Thank you.
Jen?
Good morning. I just wanted to um, give a brief update on some up and coming things. That um fiscal has, or is preparing for. Um, one, the first one will be, um, our first supplemental is due to me by April twelfth. So that's coming in hot. Um, the second one is, I'm currently working on um preparing. For the annual budget recap slash training that I, I hold with offices and departments. So those offices and departments, stay tuned. You'll see an email come out when we're ready to schedule that. And then lastly, I have a list of, ongoing list of things that the board as well as fiscal will need to. Go through, address, make plans for, discuss. Um, so I'm working on preparing for a workshop. Um, with the board at some point in time, probably within the next month or two. Um, to go over some things that I'm collecting, alternative revenue sources. We need to readdress um at least the portion of the coroner's budget and how we're gonna set that up. On the budget side of things, nothing else. Um, new grants, legislation appropriations. Programs, service, new programs that departments or offices want to implement and. Once again, opioid settlement, one, two, and now three. So, um.
How much money is it?
I don't, um, so, yeah, stay tuned. We've, we've got a lot to discuss.
Spring has arrived.
Yes.
Thinking supplemental April, didn't we just do one? Four months ago.
It was, yeah.
So, okay.
It's going fast.
Any questions?
Not for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions.
Say, come back?
Yeah.
Casey wants to come up and. You had your chance.
I know. I don't know if I should apologize.
No, not at all.
Um, so the only thing I have as far as the HR side is that the clerk's office received a resignation this morning. So we are looking for a verbal to advertise for the legal admin one or two position within their department. It's within the budget and.
Needs to be filled.
It's, yes, effective immediately and so she'd like to get it posted ASAP.
Mr. Anderson? Okay, good.
Yep, yes.
So before Casey goes, I'd like to, you know, to word this very carefully. So um. Casey and I, uh, whenever.
Happy birthday, or whatever.
Whenever Casey and I, um. In HR, we always strategize about how we're gonna approach um, an issue. And um, maybe who's the lead and who's, you know, the roles we're gonna play. Um, Casey has uh had to deal with some extremely complicated, extremely difficult. Um, situations that I haven't seen for decades. Um, and she handled them. As an HR pro, just like we would expect. She handles it with dignity. At the same time, protects the county's best interest and she has the unique ability to do both. So, just wanna thank her.
Do I pay you now?
Yes. Small bill, yeah, sure. Um, while I'm in the thank you mode, uh, safety committee, we had presentation um by Jeff King and Frank and Filberto. About safety and training topics. Um, it was, it was a really, really good report. And, and uh the safety committee's gonna consider um, what they're proposing. So there'll be uh much more on that later. But you know, some of the topics they talked about and they're willing to, to um. Do the training on and be part of is uh reporting emergencies for staff, reporting suspicious activity. Potential safety issues, standard uh response protocol. The terminology that we use over twenty-seven offices and departments to describe an incident to maybe dispatch. Have in common, a common verbiage that is um in, in a moment of crisis is understood. And clear, um, uh can be life-saving, um accountability and communications, training opportunities. And building a training calendar, um, and adding in these topics. So I just wanna thank them for, for that presentation and, and it was quite a bit of information. And their willingness to uh step in and, and part of that would be a uh evacuation plan, some training for fire. Uh, suspicious activities like bomb threads, all of those kinda things, how we respond to those as a county. So I just wanted to acknowledge you, their time, took them a long time probably to put it together and to make the presentation and it was much appreciated. And I'm sure you'll hear more as we, safety committee moves forward with, consider some of their recommendations. So. Um, speaking of safety, Wednesday, Casey and I have a two-hour training provided uh as part of our contract. With ADBC on uh workers' comp and it's a two-hour safety review. Probably not just limited to, to workers' comp, but there's no cost to that. It's a good, it's, it's more or less like an audit. And they go through and ask us a lot of questions and. Give us feedback and how we can improve the process. So, um, so we're, we're working on that. And that'll, that'll happen Wednesday and I'll be able to report you, report back to you later on that. I think that's it for HR. Is there any, any questions for HR? IT submitted theirs in writing. Do you have any questions for, for Randy?
Um, no, other than I will apologize to you, sir. Yesterday, my email box was being flooded. That it seems like every time I picked up my phone, there was twelve new emails. And so as I'm cruising through there, being so good. I opened one of your dang phishing scam things. And it's the first one I fell for in three and a half years, but I was so busy. And, and so just trying to crank these out that I clicked on that button. I, and then I look up at the email address from the sender and went, and just cringe. So you probably have a file down there for me that I need to take a uh, a little online training to make sure I don't do that anymore. And I apologize for making your life harder and we happen to go through more training, so.
It happens to the best of us, Commissioner Christopher. Uh, we all make mistakes.
It taught me to slow down.
Mayor may not have happened to me at one point, not gonna.
You're not gonna admit it in the public arena. I, I admit my faults.
I have, maybe, maybe not.
Mr. Anderson, did you, were you saying something else?
Yep. Yes, uh, I would just wanted to say thank you, Randy, for your written report. Um, I really appreciate that it's in writing, so I can read it three or four times to understand it. Um, but I do have one question. Um, where are we at with our um main firewall? And getting it to um automatically uh fail over to one of our other firewalls? Can you give us an update on that?
Yes, yes, I can, as a matter of fact. Um, I have specked out some, some new equipments, a, a new firewall. Um, we already have a, a uh, an agreement with Astound for the, for the um. The, the network, the internet connection, for the additional internet connection. Um, right now, as a matter of fact, I'm, I'm waiting for a statement of work from our vendor to uh, to install. Once I get that statement of work, uh I'll bring it forward to you for, to the board for a signature. And uh we will, we will move forward with that. Um, but we're right on the cusp. I expected a, uh, I expect, uh, hopefully today, I expect a statement of work for that. So it'll be on, it'll be on the agenda and then I will move forward with it.
So that, that, that's, isn't that a second line uh around the county? Or you know, a, a second, you know, anus and uh backbone internal? That's not external, I thought.
I'm sorry, I, I don't understand that question.
So the statement of work for Astound, is that, is that so? I thought that was to connect the, the courthouse up. With a, with a backup. Or am I getting mixed up?
Okay, so we have two vendors with two statements of work. Um, the first vendor was, was uh Astound, which provides us the internet connection. Um, the second statement of work is uh, is Right Systems, which will configure the new firewall. And, and, and prepare it for redundancy. Um, that's the statement of work that we're waiting for. Uh, I'm hoping I have it today. Did that answer your question?
So, so we're not gonna have a, a second, you know, line out to the outside world. What we're gonna have is a fire, a new fire, a new main firewall with redundancy to one of our previous firewalls? Or how does that work?
We will maintain the existing internet connection, which is provided to us through Blue Mountain Networks. Um, so that will, that will remain in place. We will add an, we will add an additional. Uh, connection through Astound. Um, we wanted to go with different vendors that had different paths to the internet. Um, so if, so we're to, in, in order to avoid a single point of failure. Um, that's, yes, so there will be two connections.
Okay, okay, so we're gonna have dual paths to the outside. That's what I wanted to make sure. And then, uh, and then so on the firewall side though, that's always been our single point of failure. Cause you could have two paths coming out of the firewall. Um, but if your firewall goes down, you gotta replace it. Um, so we'll have a secondary firewall that it'll automatically fail over to?
Yes, yes, that's the plan. And so one firewall is in the courthouse, which eventually I'd like to move to the admin building. The new firewall is going to go into emergency management. Um, the reason for that is, is if there is any interruption in service between the emergency management building and the um. And, and the admin building or the courthouse, they still have connection to the outside world.
Got it. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna reroute the, the, we're gonna reroute. The admin building in the courthouse out to emergency management and then from emergency management out to the outside world.
Uh, the word reroute, I'm not, I'm, I'm not clear what your meaning is for reroute. We're not rerouting anything. We are adding a connection.
Okay, because there's, there's already a sound out, nevermind. I'll talk to you offline, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm, I'm very glad that we're making progress.
Okay, thank you, Randy. So is that it?
Thank you.
You bet. George.
Uh, when are you gonna get rid of some of these sub-departments of yours?
Can't get rid of me. That's a question. Um, so I wanna start off, George and I uh had the opportunity to meet with the prosecuting attorney. And the deputy prosecuting attorney a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, uh to ask some questions. A, a number of questions that, that George had and uh we wanna thank him for their time. And um, they're engaging in the conversation and giving us the feedback that uh helped us move forward. So I wanted to acknowledge that and thank him for that. Um, George has submitted a written report. Um, uh, as well as, I think he has some things to say, but in terms of the written report, is there any questions?
I have none. Yeah.
They appreciate you getting us the reports a couple of days ahead of time and not like the night before.
Mr. Anderson, do you have any questions for George's written report?
Oh, after he gives his oral report, if I have any, I'll ask.
And I can talk about before George Simpson there, we're still working on the Title twenty-four update. I say we specifically him. Um, he has drafted out, you know, it's, it's, it, it's a light revision, I would, I would term it. Um. Uh, and uh, he's uh working with uh departments that could be impacted on his proposed changes. And uh, meeting with some uh outside stakeholders uh with Jeff King's help. Um, before we even bring it to you for discussion. So we're a long way from getting into the formal notification process. I think our hope and goal is in the March workshop to bring what he would like to discuss with you to get feedback and if. And uh, depending on the feedback, then we'll move forward and, and more into the formal um, P A review and, and the public input in, in the formal process. So I just want you to know it is being worked on, it is progressing. Um, I, I've looked at it and asked him a few questions and he, so. Uh, we hope to get it to March so we can have a discussion with the commissioners about what he's proposing or, so we make sure we're on the same track. With that, George, anything?
Yeah, I don't really have much to add, just be uh, I supplied my written report. Uh, I just want to publicly say uh, thanks to the prosecuting attorney for, again, like Rob was mentioning, for sitting down and talking with us. Definitely makes my life easier when I know what they are wanting and expecting and uh, uh publicly thank the health department for aiding me in uh all these septic issues we've been having with all this water. Um, we've had a, a lot of septic complaints uh recently. And I, I think we were expecting it, but not to this degree. Um, so. And then uh final thanks to the sheriff's office for um supplying me with a, a lot of. Information that I would have uh probably stumbled across uh in, in a not ideal way.
So, I, you know, I think.
I have a quick question. Failed septic tanks because of rainwater, what happens? The, does the dirt just get water? I mean, probably a better question for public health, but you're in it, so you probably know. Does the dirt just get so saturated that it overflows the actual holding tank? What's, what's happening on most of these?
Uh, it's, it's different on case by case based, but if, if there's already, you know, uh stress to the tank itself. When you have a lot of water, it uh, from my understanding that, like, the. Water in the soil, like essentially flexing causes issues and then, I mean, it really.
So I guess it's kind of like my, I mean, I have some natural springs that this time of year just water starts percolating out of the ground. So it's probably percolating into the septic system and pushing it out the tank.
And then, and I mean, it, it varies, it varies with all complaints too, but uh, we've had a lot of false alarms, which is great. But there, you know, there's uh, a lot of water and people just associate a lot of water with failing septics. Especially when, you know, you have a, a septic in that area and then you just see a, a bunch of water pooling. Uh, we've had a lot of complaints that are thankfully, again, not uh, not actually failing, but um, yeah. So it depends on, but the water definitely never helps.
Thank you.
But you know, it's, it's worth noting and I think that's what we're both talking about is George gets a lot of help. From the public health department, the sheriff's department, uh, building department, uh prosecuting attorney's office. And you know, it just makes it a lot easier, uh, a lot more effective with, with all of the help that people are willing to provide.
Makes to see him building those relationships with those departments that you're gonna have to rely on.
Yeah.
Uh, even the prosecutor's office, cause you can't push a case through that they don't like how you.
Yeah.
Handle the case kind of thing. So you kinda. To get a case across the finish line, you gotta do it in a way that they approve. So um, figuring out what that is is, is good.
All right. Thank you, George.
All right, thanks, Phil.
Uh, I had a couple of questions.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, thank you. Uh, number, I guess the first thing, uh, there's a diff- bunch of different ways the septic system can fail. Um, you can have a perfectly, a perfectly fine septic system, but if you have, you know, a toilet that runs for three days. Hey, you can still blow out the end of a septic system because it's not designed for that amount of flow, right? So that's, that's one way, but it usually doesn't completely fail. It fails and then it's, you know, it gets fixed and it keeps going. The other issue that we have. Is uh, we don't have a full system where we go around and ensure that everybody pumps their septic tank every three to five years. And that's another way that they fail. Um, that the larger counties have found, you know, ways to, to work on that. Um, and but I guess I would just like to say uh, thank you to, to George. Um, and um, this is a good example of how. You know, when the departments are all working together and not siloed, um, and all they're elected, uh, we can be really successful. And I think George has done everything that we have asked him for in terms of trying to create the voluntary compliance. Um, so thank you very much, George. My, my question did occur, my, uh, talking about emails getting blown, blown up. My email's still been blowing up over the uh gravel pit mining operation of Rattlesnake. And in your um, uh, your update, you said, we're not sure if we're moving towards a stop work order. Uh, or, or, or not. Um, what are those triggers that you have and when did they get pulled? Um, if you could give me an update on that, George.
Yeah, so the mine operation on uh Rattlesnake Road, um, as of right now, the. Two property owners are under litigation. They're going after uh, I've heard under, uh, after easements. And it is my understanding that the conditional use permits on pause until these easements, these uh litigations are all uh squared away. Um, I did write, I did drive out to Rattlesnake Road and I noticed that all the advertisements were removed for the rock pit. So I'm not sure if that's uh, an indication of the step that the property owner's gonna make, but I did see the. Uh, the road signs for uh, the rock pit removed as well as the gate that was leading into the entrance removed. Which could be him answering to the litigation, I'm not sure. But as of right now, we're just waiting to see what happens uh with that. As, and yeah, as far as I know, they're not mining. Um, I sat out there and just wrote reports. Um, on, I don't remember from memory of the day, but um. I, I sat outside of Rattlesnake Road and I just wrote reports for a good four or five hours. I didn't see any trucks going in and out of the property.
Thank you for the update, sir.
Thank you, George.
Commissioner Anderson, I agree with your comments on George. I think he's doing a great job too. So thank you for that. Go ahead and.
All right, uh, first I wanted to update you guys on the community cleanups coming up this spring and summer. We have dates set for the Lisle cleanup, the White Salmon Benjin cleanup, Centerville and High Prairie have all got their stuff started. As far as there've been applications and organizing, I still need to figure out the dates for Goldendale and Click-a-Jat.
I apologize. I'm getting it to you and I hope to have the answer for you next week.
Okay.
Uh, for Goldendales.
And then um, we had community members reach out from Dalzport. They would like to do one this year as well. So I kind of gave them the startup tools and offered support. See what kind of cleanup they wanted to do and how large. And so I'm just waiting to see if they need my help and what kind of support they need on that.
Have you not heard back from Click-a-Jat?
I've been working with, I've had a couple of different phone calls with him. He was just, yeah, the gentleman that usually um runs it, he wants to pick a date.
Okay, perfect.
And I'll get um, you guys all of those dates so that if you want to attend, participate, observe, whatever. Um. You definitely can. Uh, the Centerville one is kind of fun because it's through the schools and we just take all the little kids out to pick up the garbage with their little grabbers and their little bus. So. And then um, my contractor for the plastics, she's willing to be at those events as well to take if people want to bring their twine or their specialized plastics to those events as well. And as for an update on the plastics, I brought num- exact numbers this time for you guys. Um, since we've contracted with our Rebecca. The Goldendale amount was, she's done five hundred and eighty-nine pounds of plastics from our Goldendale pickup and a hundred and fifty-eight pounds of plastics. From the White Salmon pickup. Any questions on that?
The, the lady that does the plastics also does the baling twine, right?
Yep, yeah, same.
It's all covered.
Yeah.
In a, a giant black garbage bag full of baling twine to the feed store and they just looked at me like. Eh, two years.
So, so then you know to get five hundred pounds of that, that's a lot of, that's a lot of bags.
That's, well, I don't know, this bag was about seventy pounds in itself.
So um, the, it, the feedback she's getting from the pickup site here and pickup site in White Salmon is. They seem to be happy and, and uh, you know, stuff's not building up. Rebecca's doing a good job and, and um.
I asked the feed store here too and they said, running good, so.
I posted kind of a, a flyer online that kind of described what plastics were being taken and stuff. And there was a lot of community interest. So I have been in contact with the place for taking the plastics to see if there's other types of plastics that they can take. Cause the community has asked if we can do like feedbags or the bubble wrap that has like kind of the, the tin bottom from like. Uh, like HelloFresh and food services, they give that. So um, I've been in contact with them to see if we can also kind of expand. And it's in the contract that we can add or take away materials if necessary. So. Um, next item is the solid waste advisory committee. But so far we have participation from Benjin City Council, the health department has picked their person. And then uh, for the agricultural seat, Dirt Hugger says they're gonna provide a, a representative for that. Everybody else hasn't gone back to me or hasn't chosen a representative yet and I'm gonna follow up with them this week.
Have we uh, or have you reached out to Republic to see? Uh, their opinion on the quality of our recycling. Do, do our citizens put the right stuff in the bag? Or do they need more education on what to put in the bag? I know I'm constantly removing things from the bag at my house. Uh, to not contaminate the bag. Uh, but I'm curious if you've had public outreach and or with Republic to make sure people know what kind of cardboard. You know, kind of the scenario.
That's one of kind of my projects I want to work on. I want to do a newsletter type thing that talks about common mistakes and I want to reach out to Republic and ask like, what are your probably top five mistakes? People are making. Is it like the glass bottles or so? And then we get a quarterly report on, of course, how much is.
Dirty pizza boxes might be a, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
And then educate people and maybe they won't do it anymore. So I think that's the key.
So I'm hoping you had to do that newsletter and have it ready, cause I hadn't, I got approved to do the Home and Garden Show booth through the, for grant funding. And so I plan to be there and talk about that with people that are wondering or help people sign up for recycling there.
Just amazing how time flies. We're already talking about cleanups in the summer fair and, you know, you know, it's like. Mentally, we're three quarters through the year on these events, so.
And then we'll be to fall.
Yeah.
And then the Home and Garden Show, I also got a, I also got approved by the grant to have a gentleman come in and do master composting demonstrations.
And I know she's been working for Leanne on the solid waste advisory committee. What we talked about the other day was, we'd rather take our time than do it right. And thorough, she's put together great information so people know what's involved and the commitment and the time. You know, some were appointed by the commissioner, some are representatives of cities and school districts. And she's working really hard to get the information out uh, so that uh, people that are interested know what's expected of them and, and the work that. It's gonna come up over the next year or two. So, so uh, we're not in a hurry to be in a hurry. We're just trying to be as thorough as possible. And I think she's doing a good job with that. So it's a very important advisory committee for the next couple of years for us. Anything else on your list?
No.
I want to thank Mackenzie. She stepped up and is uh, learning the, oh, how to process invoices and deal with deposits and. And the solid waste and so that's good. Uh, she just didn't, didn't hesitate. She'd just taken that on. Still working, I'm still working with Republic on the transfer stations. We've, uh, the ninety-day notice has been issued by everybody necessary to the current vendors and. Um, just waiting for Republic to name their, their subsidiary vendors. So we can be uh in compliance with the new uh Republic contract. And so I think it's probably gonna be the ninety-day notice went through most of April, so probably around May first when um, we can get uh, new vendors to keep the transfer stations uh, um, stuff processed out of the transfer stations. Horse thief, I went through more boxes recently and looked at more documents than I care to. Um, I think I'm coming to the conclusion and um. That we need to do an R F P to bring somebody in to help just put together um, the testing requirements uh. For horse thief so we can complete the po- uh post-closure. Uh, Jen and I are gonna review the solid waste budget very thoroughly. We've talked about that before. It's time to do it. Uh, we haven't made many changes in the last two years. We just moved money, uh, moved money within the budget, but I, uh, we need to take a good. Hard look at it fiscal side and um, from that we'll be able to determine if we have the money in there to do. An R F P and then the post-closure work and, and keep that moving forward. So that is taking a long time. It's not intentionally getting kicked down the road. I've looked at um, a bunch of R F Ps for um, gas and water testing and post-closed landfills and it's. A lot of work, highly technical work. So, and David Kavanaugh's been a big help, but I um, ultimately I think we're gonna have to go out and get. Help drafting an R F P so that uh, we meet ecologies required.
We need to get that done. So it, it needs to be finished and, and I don't know that we have the expertise.
I agree.
Here to do it. So I'm, I'm fine personally with getting an R F P, getting a company in here that knows what they're doing, get it handled, get it done, get that off our plate.
And you have advisory staff from D O E to help you walk through that process?
Yeah, we, we had a conference call set up by Mr. Kavanaugh last year with D O E and their team. So we know what. Their concerns, one from, I mean, this thing's been in hold for five, six, seven years. Uh, so we know what their, what their concerns were uh, with the testing from the last time. So um.
Any chance of any funding to help with that testing?
Um, I think it's all on us. I mean, we can, we can look for grants, but and, and hopefully um, not speaking out of turn, cause uh, David Kavanaugh's. Much more the expert than I am. Um, we just need to do a series of testing and present the results to ecology to. To either confirm what we did last time or to show a difference. And then from there, we can do a plan. But whether it's ongoing testing or building um airberms for permanent dispersment of any methane if there continues to be. So. We just have to get the testing done and get it done to the standards that uh ecology wants. There's some concerns they had last time. And then we can put together the plan. So we know what the long-term plan is. Either A or B, we just don't know which one to do without this testing. So. Uh, I hope I stated that all correctly, but uh, D O E is, it's uh, working with us and trying to, because they'd like to see it. I mean, we pay seven hundred, eight hundred dollars a year just for an air testing permit um, as a post-closed landfill. So we need to wrap it up. I agree with Commissioner Christopher. It is being worked on. It's just a um, a lot of technical stuff.
Well, as I said, I know, I know it's being worked on and I appreciate the work. But there's so much on our plate and that's one of those things that it's very technical, very time consuming, that if we want to keep it in-house. Expect a few more years to go by and it would be nice to get this out of here.
I agree. That's the goal. That's the goal. All right. Any questions for any of us? Thank you, Mackenzie.
No, other than I, I want to ask Mackenzie, any regrets? You took this job bright-eyed and, and smile on your face and just happy when you applied and is it all you thought it would be?
It's definitely challenging, but I'm, I'm really enjoying it still and I'm really excited to actually get to participate in the cleanups and some of the events I missed last spring. So.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
She's built a great relationship with uh Michelle, who uh now is in charge of uh, programs for, I don't know, nine, ten counties. And uh, uh, this being our home county, Michelle's home county, they, they work very close together and I think that benefits. That benefits us and I know it helps Mackenzie. Uh, so and, and on the cleanups, it's, you know, even since I've been involved, it's grown. I mean, we've been, what, seven of them now, should they all come to fruition? So that's uh, that's, that's great.
And, and you've done such a good job and I know you have the design of where you're going and it shows. You seem very confident. And you know where you're going and how you need to accomplish it. So I can see that. Thank you.
I've heard nothing but good things, so thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, Joe said.
I would just echo that. Thank you very much, Courtney. Um, but both my teammates as well as uh, uh Director Van Cleve said, you're doing a great job. Keep up the good work. Um, and uh, go forth and do, do good work. Director Van Cleve said, you're doing a great job, keep up the good work, um, and, uh, go forth and do, do good work.
Yeah, thank you.
And finally, Joe said he didn't have any updates, um, this time, so things appear to be running smoothly. Um, out at his end and, and so, um, nothing to report there. With that, I'm done.
Unfortunately, cause I was kinda curious about the fire, but.
It's seen.
I'll ask next time I run in, no.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
What are, Commissioner Christopher?
Uh, nothing to see here.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, we had a new item come forward for a discussion on public defense proposed revised standards for indigent defense and caseload limits.
At this point, I'm having, um, it's a little, how do I explain it? Let me send it to all of you.
I think I might have what you're talking.
It's from, you know?
Okay, thank you. And I, I think.
So we wanna to, and also, uh, judge.
PA letter that I didn't get.
I, I think it just came in.
Yeah, so what it is, is it's not something you didn't get, hang on, I'm saying. Um, it's not something you didn't get, it, uh, it was, I've reached out with our draft letter that, um, for the caseloads and reached out to the PA, reached out to the judges, reached out to the, um, uh, the public defenders for comment. And so I have received comments from the PA. And so I've just forwarded you that. And, um, I've received comment from the, uh, public defenders, but not anything real clear.
Um, I think maybe we should expand a little bit about what you're talking about, so the public knows where we're at. Um, this, this was kind of a quick subject that came up, which, um, I'm never a fan of doing something fast. But I think it was because there is a need for us to draft a letter, uh, with information or support by Wednesday afternoon. And if that's a hard deadline, that makes it, uh, something very quick that we have to work on. And I think you were working, staff was working with Commissioner Anderson on this. Yeah, and so Commissioner Anderson, would you like to do the update on what this is and, um, why the Board of County Commissioners is, uh, working on this?
Sure, thank you, um, I'm just reading the emails too right now. Um, so what this is, is this came through in an email, I don't know if it was yesterday or the day before, uh, from Juliana Rowe at, um, who's the, the legal policy expert at WASC. And this comes to the caseload limits. Um, I thought there was a lot more time and I think they thought there was more time. Um, but this is setting caseload standards for, uh, indigenous defense services. Um, in essence, we had a conversation at WASC about it. Um, and the, from, from all the, the other counties that were present, most people figured it would, uh, just about triple the cost that they pay in, in public, uh, defense services. Um, on top of that, there's also requirements, um, um, for, um, uh, not just the attorneys, but the, the professional staff behind the attorney. Um, a lot of this makes sense when you have like an office of public defense, like, uh, Yakima County, Benton County, you know, the bigger counties have like full offices of public defense. Us rural counties, uh, we don't have offices of public defense, we contract everything out. Um, and, and so it makes it really difficult. Um, a lot of those offices of public defense, they built, um, uh, not just caseloads, but they've got a point system. Um, and so, so you can only have so many points. The problem is, is that in these counties, um, you know, you have caseload standards, but everybody's already over the caseload standards. Um, and since they're already over the caseload standards, if you're gonna cut them so that you need three times as many attorneys, it just doesn't add up. And a lot of this is coming from the state Supreme Court, right? Um, and I had a good long conversation last night with, um, West District Court, um, Judge Baker, you know, about what it would do for his court. Um, and, and so Juliana's ask is that we respond, um, and we also point out like, hey, we don't have the money. Hey, you know, there's, I, I guess a lawsuit going on, um, trying to get the state to fund this. Um, so that this will be kinda like a McCleary decision where, where the, the judicial branch says, this is part of your obligation according to the constitution, say you need to fund this. And so my, my thought was because this is due on the eighth, um, I know, I, I believe, um, Judge Krog is supposed to be, uh, showing up at eleven, um, to, to have a conversation about this. But I wanted to make sure that, uh, both of my seatmates are, um, on the same page, that it would be a good idea to send in a letter, so at least we're on record with, uh, the, uh, attorney organization. Um, that, hey, uh, if there's, if we all know there's not enough attorneys, how in the world can you make the caseload standard so that now there's there's no chance of meeting this? That you're, I mean, I see it as an unfunded mandate, but I see it as worse than an unfunded mandate because, uh, at least a mandate, you know, you can actually do, this is a situation in which there's just not enough attorney. I know Commissioner Christopher, this has been around for a while, if you, I, I know you, you worked with on this a bit last year, didn't you? If you'd like to, to speak to it.
Uh, yeah. Um, it's an ongoing issue. I guess my, my concerns with the letter are the same as the concerns with our public defense attorneys in their, um, email back where they find a couple of factual discrepancies in the letter, of which, as I read the letter, which I'm just now seeing, uh, I'm finding a couple myself, so I don't know which ones theirs were. Uh, but I would assume we might be looking at the same. So maybe, uh, for me to sign this letter, I, I can't do it with the discrepancies that are there. Um, I agree with the underlying core of it. Uh, but if it's not factual, I can't put my signature on it. So I don't know if we need to edit those things, uh, redact a, a couple of sentences or something to clean it up and make it correct. Um, I understand the time crunch, but, um, doing it quickly and doing it wrong is not the answer, so I, I would hope that we would, as a board, wanna clean up the language a little bit.
Jake, do you know?
If, if, if I may, uh, Madam Chair, um, this, uh, definitely is not in the wheelhouse, um, of, of me, it's definitely not in the wheelhouse of our commissioners. Um, and I would like to, um, say thank you very much to the clerk of the board, um, who stayed up late trying to get a rough draft and then came in early to try to work on a draft or something that she doesn't have full knowledge of. Um, so, so thank you very much. Um, we knew that this is, this was draft, this is just something to start the discussion, to also help get the, um, the people to come to the table so that we can have a discussion, uh, at eleven o'clock, which, uh, was where it was at on the agenda. I didn't know if any of the others, uh, were gonna be able to make it. But this was just a draft so that we could fix it. This was not meant to be signed as, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
That's great, and I wasn't aware Judge Krog was coming at eleven or I could have set off this conversation. But I think it's good, we have a pre-conversation before he gets in the room. Um, and I agree with you, uh, Commissioner Anderson, this is not in our wheelhouse and especially since it's legal and so many things that we work on, um, that the commissioners weigh in on. We depend on our partners and so I do wanna hear from, um, those involved and our partners involved. Is there any way, um, that the people requesting the response can set that back? Uh, do they have a hard timeline they are trying to meet? Um, this was a quick ask for us.
The, the only thing I have is what Juliana sent out, um, and they're having a meeting and apparently they want to vote on it at that meeting.
Wow.
Yeah, no, I, I think it, it blew us all away. Um, otherwise we would have been, you know, we would have had this quite a bit of time ahead.
So we have a couple of responses from the, uh, public defenders who have the contract. And so hopefully we can craft something between all of us to get something in, um, or take their sound advice, whether we should or should not. So, um, for me, I have enough information and can wait on Judge Krog.
I have one last question for Commissioner Anderson, if you would. Um, have you double-checked these, uh, numbers? The dollars that you have in here with, uh, finance to make sure they're correct?
I, I didn't write, remember this was staff that wrote it, I just made some grammatical changes.
Got it.
This morning. So, a- again, um, thank you very much, um, for staff. You mean, you've went above and beyond on this one. Um, just, you know, staying up late, knowing that there's a deadline. Um, this is the, the good stuff that, that our staff is doing for, for the county.
Thank you. Um, so we'll continue this conversation, I believe, at eleven o'clock when our Judge Krog is present. Um, and hear what our partners have to say.
If, if, if I may, uh, Madam Chair, um, I know it's not miscellaneous, but we've got fifteen minutes. Um, I just wanted to give you guys an update. Uh, I sent, uh, this is regards to the town hall. Um, I sent, uh, an email about a week ago, um, to, um, Columbia George Community Connections. I don't have a phone number for them, I have not gotten any response from them. Um, I just wanted to talk to my seatmates, do you want me to, uh, reach out to the Golden Dale Sentinel and see if, um, they'd be willing to? Or do we have anybody else in mind who would like to be the, the moderator facilitator for this?
I have no other suggestions, Mr. Christopher, any other suggestions for a moderator?
I would say this, this part of it's your idea, so I don't wanna, um, steal your baby, you, kinda thing. So, uh, whoever you find that you feel confident with is fine with me.
Well, I, it's not my baby, I'm just trying to figure out who, who can we get, um, that all three of us are okay with. I don't want to step on, uh, uh, either of my seatmates' toes. So if anybody has any ideas, I'd happy to reach out. Um, I did see that the Facebook page is up. Um, we're gonna, uh, hoping to work with staff to set the, um, the, the time, you know, like, create the Facebook live link or whatever so that we can start sending it out and, and, you know, going around the public and letting everyone know, posting it to the pages and stuff. Um, so that's the next thing, I, we just still need to find someone who's available that night. So, I just, I don't wanna go off on my own, I wanna make sure that everybody's on the same page.
I'm just trying to think through other meetings I've participated in with facilitators or moderators and come up with somebody new that you could ask, but I, I just don't have any suggestions right now for you. And you attend a lot of meetings, so, uh, possibly if you check your brain bank, we can find someone.
Yeah, most, most facilitators that I work with, you know, for the boards I serve on are very specialized in a certain industry.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's, of course, the case. Um, so if you guys, uh, I can reach out to, uh, the Golden Dale Sentinel and see if Lou would be willing to do it. It might, it might help us be able to spread the word, um, because then maybe he could put it in a newspaper article.
Yeah, and I know we've asked in the past, uh, Lou has helped with things like that. Um, so that would be one.
Hey. That was that update.
Okay. Okay, so.
So we do have them, um, sorry, we do have more discussion on this letter at eleven, right? So I'm working through wordage changes.
Yes.
I would hand you my notes, so you probably can read it.
So the public, for the public, I think we're just gonna take a little bit of quiet work time and, and expend our time until Judge Krog is here with us.
If, if we're just gonna work on, um, uh, wording on the letter, should we just pause the recording on the Zoom so nobody has to filter through it and we save some space?
Um, I would say yes, but then technically if we are still in open session, so if there was a conversation that broke out on the structuring of the letter, we would be in some citizens' eyes doing it behind closed doors. So I would, um, I would cautiously say that might not be great. Um, getting ten minutes of dead silence, uh, with the occasional reminder that we are in dead silence is probably better for transparency sake. This is my two cents.
Okay.
Please, do you know what number that is at, so I can pull a hard copy of that letter, rather than just have it on my. Does anybody else have it open?
I have it open. I haven't made the changes that I requested there, but I just have the regular.
I've taken out some of the, um, wordage. Uh, so what I'll do is I would go ahead and save it, go ahead and close it and then open it back up, if you would.
Do you know which number it is?
What?
I'm filtering through pages, which number it is.
Oh, so it's under VOCC agendas?
Okay.
It's only one page.
And that's where I'm at, but it's like I've got a thousand other things in there, so I'm filtering.
It's not where you're at.
Okay.
VOCC agendas looks like that.
No, and that's where I was, I was there, but I downloaded it and I was trying to go to the page so I could print it.
You downloaded the whole agenda.
Yeah.
I'm printing it.
Yeah, we're not looking at agenda, we're looking at public defense contracts.
That's, it's buried in the agenda.
Leanne is gonna go get you a copy.
Okay, thank you.
Question for my seatmates or staff, um, I've got on my calendar a Casapita Executive Board meeting tomorrow. Um, are we doing that? And what's that for?
That was the emergency meeting that, uh, some members of this board chose to pick the date for, um, which I may or may not be able to attend. Um, that had to do with the affordable housing dollars and whether, um, that was gonna be delegated by the members of six that will be in the meeting tomorrow or the whole Casapita Board. Members of six that will be in the meeting tomorrow or the whole Casapita Board. That's what that discussion was for.
And I thought this.
But you're not.
Go ahead.
You're not gonna be able to be there?
I, depends. Wednesdays are hard and if I can shift my stuff around, I will be there.
We, have we got an agenda and did, did it get posted on the doors and everything?
No idea.
Do we want to ask Richard to come down and make sure that everything was done?
When I talked to him yesterday, he said he had until. Okay, Leanne said she just posted it on the website. When I talked to Richard last night, he was potentially going to make a change. To that agenda and he knew what the timeframe was and I don't remember what he said was the timeframe. But it's, it'd be posted on the doors also.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because it's twenty-four hours, so he's got to have it done by one.
Mr. Anderson, I don't know if you have access to the shared drive right now where you're at. But if you look on there, they've updated the wording and removed some of the. Statements in question and it's, it's a more streamlined letter that you should be able to see.
Could someone email that to me? Thank you.
I do. Kind of like the wording in the old letter that says how hard it is to find conflict attorneys. And, and so I guess. I would be open to adding something in this one that, since we're having trouble finding. Attorneys, period. And we have two that if you set caseload standards and now we need four. Good luck with that. You know, we're, we're never gonna find. Not in our current makeup, but. I, I don't know that we need to be, I think this does the job. You know, it's, it's one of those things. I don't know how much they're gonna read it anyway. They seem to have their own bright ideas at the state level. And love passing down unfunded mandates, so. So yeah, I, I don't technically have any issues with the way this is currently drafted.
Oh, for me, again. I don't have a problem with the way that it's drafted, but because we do have partners that are involved in this. I would like to hear from Judge Krog and also. Possibly consider sharing the letter with the judges and the public defender contract to attorneys. So that they're comfortable with this letter too and it covers where they think we're going or what we need. Okay, thank you.
I, I'm fine with the, the new wording. I agree with Mr. Christopher. I don't know if it's gonna have any impact, but it's always good to be on the record. And then the other piece is part of this will require that you, meaning us. We pay for an investigator and a. Is it a social worker? That's gonna add a whole bunch of costs as well. And if we wanted to add that in there, that the public defenders would have access to. I don't know how in the world that would work when we don't have an office of public defense.
An office of public defense, maybe?
Excuse me, sorry. I guess I have one more update if we have a couple minutes. So the. We, we received two hundred million dollars from the federal government for the infra program. That's the, that is the program that Senator Cantwell created. We also applied for the bridge infrastructure program for two hundred million dollars. And when we applied, we said, we, we need two hundred million dollars from the feds. We don't care where we get it from. Just give us money. Well, we got the money from infra and now the bridge infrastructure program. Sent us a letter that said, hey, you are very highly ranked. Like we were very highly ranked. And they said.
And hang on for a second. Judge Krog has joined us and in the interest of his. Like to give Judge. Thank you.
We can turn that into.
Okay, hang on to it. Thank you. Good morning, Judge Krog. Are you muted? Okay. Okay, thank you. The wonders of technology. I see it's muted at the bottom on his microphone. Okay. Jake, would you like to give Judge Krog a recap of our conversation? And he is there, but he's muted and we're waiting for him to unmute. Oh, there he is. Okay, we've got him.
I'd like to have my expert come in and do that for me.
We all do it.
I apologize for that. I heard the little bit of backtalk there about me having my technical problems, so. Give me one second, we get comfortable. All right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it. I just got off the bench. I raced in here. So I, I didn't hear what was going on before, if proper time for me to be here or not, but I appreciate you taking me. To go ahead and try to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, perfect. So. An updated letter. And I, I think what the board is facing, it seems like a lot of times we do things so quick. But they received a letter about what's happening with this and we have a short turnaround to get a comment back in for Wednesday. And so Mr. Anderson and the, our administrative assistant worked hard to kind of craft something. But we're hearing from. The attorneys now and from the other judges, so we're trying to get opinions on where do we stand with answering this. So Elise has crafted a amended letter that we had hoped to send back and they just sent you a copy of that. So we don't want to send something back just from the county commissioners. We want to make sure that we listen to our partners and. Send back something. If we can get it in time, send back something with our opinion from our county.
All right. And I have, I did see earlier that there had been a letter. I hadn't had a chance to look at it. Because I'd been on the bench till just now. I'm just kind of peeking at it right now. Yeah, we, we've sent two. So the first one that was sent was found to have some inaccuracies in it. So it's been. Some of the sentences have been removed and there's been a new draft that should have been sent in the last like ten minutes.
I, thank you for let, correct, clarifying that as I was looking at the one that had been sent earlier. So I will, let me just pull up the other one just real quick and take a peek at.
Yeah, we're, we're just kind of looking to make sure that, that you don't see any factual inaccuracies and/or you don't think there's. Another valid point that we might consider adding to the letter.
In looking at that, I, I, I would wholeheartedly agree. We are experiencing quite a shortage in attorneys. I was just talking to another judge recently about that. Where in, when I first started in Skamania County, we had two or three different attorneys in Skamania County had offices. And Clickitack obviously had three or four different attorneys that were, had offices that were practicing. Would in some form, public defense. And now we are in Skamania County, I don't even have an office. Anybody with an office down there. And in Clickitack County, essentially just the, a couple of attorneys. One in White Salmon Binge and one up here that are currently have the public defense contract, but really no other attorneys that are out there. And so we are experiencing quite a shortage of those. And obviously, the costs for those, based on these numbers. Have increased substantially over the years from what I recall them being back when I practiced, so.
Now, the one thing I will add that's not quite pertinent to the letter is when I was working with Washington State Association of Counties last year and led steering. There was a proposal to bring to the legislature to. Kind of float the idea of setting up a. A fund through the state, so if an attorney wants to go to law school and then do so many years of public defense service before they go into private practice. That their school loan would be paid for by the state to remedy this public defender situation and encourage people to be public defenders. That was taken off of our WAC County Commissioner plate and was kind of put on the prosecuting attorney. Their. What do you want to call it? Their board, their collaborative. I did not see that at the legislature this year. So it's, it is my hope that something like that moves forward in the state level to encourage. Attorneys to make less money and take on the hard stuff, but I wasn't sure if you were aware of that, so I just thought I'd drop it.
I, I've heard that and I've heard that being proposed by other, you know, people and talking about different ways to try to encourage. More individuals to get involved at kind of the public level. Either from the prosecution standpoint or even the public defense standpoint, trying to figure out different ways to find in some financial encouragements. And some of that you'll see is the request to modify the indigence of standards, defense standards as to the number of cases they can have. I think that's part and parcel of them, trying to figure out ways to financially encourage more people to take on these jobs, which are. I know are, are difficult. I know I talked to Mr. Canal. I know they've had difficulty finding anybody in their office. And obviously, as you can see, we don't have a whole lot of people jumping up and trying to take public defense cases. Here in Skamania or Clickitack or anywhere. I mean, it's, it's, it's not only just statewide. It's, I hear these things and we see those things happening down in Oregon. And, and throughout the country with regards to the number of public defenders that are out there. So I, I, I would hope that they would add other incentives, create a ways to be incentives to people to do that. Such as the paying for law school. People do certain amount of work for a period of time for either public prosecution work or public defense. Any of that that they can do would be obviously very beneficial.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate your input. You. You said something there that kind of resonated in my head. And that's that, that maybe you didn't say it, maybe I just thought it. But as they're trying to imply these case standards. That maybe they're doing this to make it a financial incentive for attorneys to pick up the, the task. But by doing it this way, they can pass it off as an unfunded mandate to counties versus where if they're repaying. For college debt, they would have to pay for it. So this is their, potentially their fix. That they just don't have to pay for, which sounds about par for the course.
Yeah. I, I, that may not be the only reason they're doing it, but from this court's perspective, that is one benefit of reducing that. The caseload numbers that are out there. One, obviously beneficial, the less cases people have, the more time and energy they can put into it. The better quality of representation defendants will get, obviously out there. But there's also, by reducing the numbers, it'll make it a little bit more financially feasible for people to go ahead and into this type of work.
And that's what I'm thinking. So it might, we might get to try the same amount of cases, just pay four times a dollar amount, because now we have four of them. And they have more free time to do side cases and divorces and whatnot in their own private practice.
Yeah, I, I get concerned about the standards that they're putting in effect. They talk about the number of felony cases and misdemeanor cases. Individuals can hold, handle, which essentially would be a full-time work. You can't give them more than that because they wouldn't be able to get the work done. But then if you're reaching those numbers, it essentially precludes you from doing any kind of side civil work. And they don't even really take that into consideration, the side civil work when they impose these standards that are out there. I, as their stand right now, I don't think I've ever had any concerns about any of our attorneys reaching those numbers. I, I may be. Maybe be a little bit. Misguided in that view. And maybe they are closer than I expect that they are with regards to those numbers. But if they were dramatically reduced, as some of the proposals have been over the number of years, down from a hundred fifty felony cases down to. Forty-seven felony cases and a hundred twenty misdemeanors, that would be concerning, particularly with the lack of. Public defenders that we have and even be able to fill the, the, a number of cases that we have even in our smaller jurisdiction, much less bigger jurisdictions.
Thank you, Judge Krog. I think you answered my question right there, that this would have a material impact on the county. If we, if, you know, the, the three years that it takes to, to do this. Would you be in favor of, of adding something to the letter in essence saying? We need to incentivize attorneys into public defense rather than set limits and standards that we know we can't meet.
Oh, I, I have no problem including something that said, that says anything we can do to incentivize getting attorneys around here. We need a public defense. We need it for civil attorneys. The lack of number of attorneys impacts the court. And much more than just the criminal field, it's impacting us by trying to find. Um, and much more than just the criminal field, it's impacting us by trying to find people to handle guardianship type cases. Uh, unlawful detainer type cases. There, there's been some coverage for some of those things through the state um, right now. But there are multitude of different areas where attorneys need to be had and we just don't have access to them. Um, here whenever the court needs to appoint them sometimes. So.
So Jake, do you have something you'd like to have staff add to that letter then?
Uh, yeah, just maybe a, a sentence or so. Um, you know, I hate to say we oppose something. Without bringing a, an idea or a solution. And so maybe after we, we oppose this part and then say um, uh, a more effective means of. Uh, getting to the desired result, I think uh, might be we, we need state incentives or we would. I hate spitballing, uh, especially when I'm not feeling well. We would uh. We would recommend um, uh, state incentives um, to increase the number of public defenders. Available uh, throughout the state um, before move, before limiting caseload standards.
Um, I would add and edit. When you said state incentives, I would say state financial incentives. And to end that off, I would add before the state passes unfunded mandates onto counties that they cannot afford. Yep. That would be my.
Staff working something together um, that can be.
Yeah, okay.
Set around um, and then make sure it gets sent to um, everybody on the list. And uh, I apologize uh, Judge um, for this uh, very lateness. Uh, I hate doing these things. But we didn't know that the uh, they were going to be potentially taking a vote on Wednesday. So.
Uh, no need to apologize. I appreciate that. I, it reached out to me and I was able to get in here and. Um, not do much, but be here and hear what you guys are talking about.
Thank you, sir.
No, thank you very much.
All right. Um, if there's nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and log back off. I've got to get ready for a hearing over the lunch hour with Skamania County. Before my afternoon docket. Anything else I can try to answer or provide? I just want to thank you for inviting me to the, the meeting here today.
Thank you. We appreciate you, Judge.
We appreciate you.
Very much.
All right. Thank you, folks. Have a great day.
Okay. Back to editing.
So maybe uh, staff could um, put something together, uh, run it by Commissioner uh, Christopher. Um, here and then uh, we could adopt this afternoon.
She typed something up as about as fast as you were reading it earlier, so it might already be done. If you want her to just read what she has and we might be good to go.
Um, and so I just wanted to, to clarify um, this, this isn't the state group that's doing it. I believe it's the bar association um, that I'm trying to reread the, the document from Juliana.
Yeah, I, I believe you are correct there. Um, because. Uh, again, we're going to get into the attorneys just want to be incentivized and they really don't care where the money comes from. You have it or do you want me to?
Uh, let me, yeah, let me.
No pressure.
Uh, maybe you guys can help me with this. So Clickitack County opposes the new caseload standards due to the fact that it will not create defense attorneys in our rural county. It will only result in a greater shortage. A more effective means would be to have state funded incentives. To increase the number of public defenders available throughout the state.
Yes, but like I said, I would finish that. With a, without passing on unfunded mandates that counties cannot afford. Finish the sentence.
A, a more effective means would have, would be to ha- have. State funded incentives to increase the number of public defenders available throughout the state.
Of the state.
Which would not create.
Passing on.
Unfunded.
Unfunded mandates that struggling counties.
So. I, I guess the only thing I did was thinking about the unfunded mandate is we're talking to the bar association here. I don't think they care about the money part, at least our money part. Um, so since we're, we got to think we're sending it to the bar. Um, maybe you know, the idea is, is please don't push for these standards. Instead, just help us push for incentives, which that would then speak to them.
They're going to be able to read that and kind of just what we're, where we're coming from. To, to turn it into a state funded ask instead of a county funded ask. But I, I'm fine. I'm open either way. It's, you know, there's three of us. Um, we're close. If you want to remove all of that and just go with the original, that's fine too.
Could, could you repeat the original one more time?
Uh, just pulling out that whole section.
The unfunded mandate.
The new added piece and just remove the unfunded mandate kind of thing from the end of it.
Okay. And then just making sure um, that it says, you know, in there that um, this is. I mean, I think we say it above, but this is going to uh, worsen the shortage. Um, and so how can you?
You already have that in there. That it will only result in greater shortage. You already have that.
Yeah, okay.
Her statement was a good ending statement.
Um, so essentially she just added a more effective means would be to have state funded incentives to increase the number of public defenders. Available throughout the state and then we can pull the, and not passing on unfunded mandates to struggling counties. That struggling counties can't afford. I, I, I still leave it in. It doesn't hurt us. Uh, the state may get a copy and if we send one to the state, we can just C C the state legislators in this whole scenario. I don't know. I think it's fine.
Yeah, so you're just saying ended at the word state?
Currently it reads a more effective means would be to have s- state funded incentives to increase the number of public defenders. Available throughout the state. And then I am not passing on unfunded mandates to that struggling counties can't afford. So you could end it, it's just remove the whole mandates part of it and.
Perfect.
On there too.
Perfect. Let's uh, let's send that out.
Ended it state.
That works for you.
I'm good with that.
I'm. We, we didn't change it after the last email. So I, I, I really struggle sending it to all of our partners again and again and again and again. That I'm bombarding their email and making them read a document that we just added one sentence to, but.
All right, well, whatever. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, this is, I guess from my perspective, you know. From WASAC, WASAC's perspective, it strictly comes down to the financial implications to the county. Which as the B O C C, we could say it's the same thing for us. Um, which is why I wanted to include the judges and the, the public defenders. Uh, bec-. Because um, we're going beyond just the B O C C here. Uh, we are saying like this is going to have a, a harm to the actual um. Justice system. You know what I mean?
Yeah, but I guess in my own mind, I feel it could and it couldn't. Because if they limit caseload for the attorneys, the attorneys might actually love the idea. Because now if they can get paid some ridiculous amount of money by the county and still operate a private practice and make a ridiculous amount of money there. This is a win-win for them. So I don't know that it would actually harm. I mean, technically their way of doing it. Might actually provide you more attorneys. Um, you might have more people stepping up. So I, I don't know that it necessarily will be a harm other than financially.
I, I believe Commissioner Christopher, um, if I may, Madam Chair. Uh, what Judge Krog pointed out is what the same thing we deal with is these caseload standards. Are what is considered an F T E equivalent. And so they wouldn't be able to take outside cases like our public defenders currently do. The, the case numbers would get reduced. And now what you're saying is this is your full caseload that you can have if you want to be a public defender. Um, it wouldn't allow that. Uh, you know what I mean? You know what I'm saying?
Then it would get real expensive then.
That's, that's why.
You'd be paying.
Yeah.
Two twenty for them to do half as much work.
The, that's what the other counties were saying is it would increase public defense cost by three times.
Well, if you have faith, the legislature might actually listen. You have more faith than I do, but I'm willing to make a go of it.
We're just doing our best. Remember, we're always fighting a losing battle.
Okay. I'm good with it then.
All right.
No, leave it at state and remove the, and not passing on unfunded mandates the rest of the sentence.
And I'm good with the letter. Um, reaching back out to public defenders, I feel like um, as long as they're clear. We're moving forward because we only have a short timeframe for this reply. Yeah. That we don't have time to sit down and have a workshop and work our way through it. So you're, you're good with the letter, Jake? Mr. Anderson. Okay, thank you. Great. That wasn't too bad, too painful. Jake, did you want to finish your update that you started? About the bridge?
Sure, since I got it going. Um, I can't remember where I was at, but in essence, the bridge investment program. We had a debrief with them last week. And the gist of it was is um, uh, we can use up to eighty percent of the dollars of the bridge. In federal dollars. And uh, we'd always, you know, figured two hundred million would be fine, a hundred and twenty-five from each state. Uh, knowing that each state would be also using federal dollars, some of their federal allocation. And then um, uh, the rest would be covered locally through, you know, toll bonds. Um, the, the conversation was, hey, they're trying to get this money out. And if uh, we can't take the full two hundred million dollars out because that would put us over the eighty percent. But um, if we reduce it to a hundred and fifty million, that would put us close to the eighty percent. And it would, it would actually fulfill all the obligations and we would be a fully funded project. Um, we uh, are going uh, the, the um. Owners rep and uh, the, the uh. By state bridge authority uh, decided that it doesn't hurt to ask. Um, and if they want to give us the money, that saves the states a bunch of dollars on their um, federal portion. Apportionment where, which some of their money would have been coming from the feds anyway. And then they can use their federal apportionment on other projects. Um, and so in essence, it's just trading out what we call state dollars, which is partially federal dollars for just a straight federal grant. Um, and then it, it fills the gap a hundred percent and sets us in a completely different place moving forward. Um, I just wanted to bring it up to you guys because I went back and forth internally. Because I hate going to the feds and saying, hey, all we need is two hundred million and we're going to come up with our part. Um, and then going back and saying, but if you're willing to give us three hundred and fifty million, we're not going to say no. But in the end, it's, it's all the same colors of money. Um, so we are.
The question I have is, did you guys set up a? Do you have a little um, leeway in there? To make sure you're not over budget, running back and asking for more handouts? Is there? Are we erred on the side of caution money wise or how's that working?
So of the five hundred and twenty million dollars, um, there is a thirty percent. Um, uh, uh, there's a term for it. I'm sorry, I'm not feeling well. Um, a thirty percent. Um, placeholder in there for cost overruns and the fact that, you know, the bridge isn't a hundred percent design. Um, but that's where we were at.
I just wanted to make sure we got that placeholder and then I was going to ask you what the percentage was. So you answered both questions with one statement. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. And originally the bridge was five hundred million. When that came out, we added twenty million to the cost. Because the inflation was so great the next year. Because in the, the um, design of that, we were, we were averaging a four percent inflator per year. Uh, and it's all based on the centroid. So the centroid is the middle part of where the construction is at. So I mean, it's, it's, I mean, this is seven hundred pages of technical documents I'm trying to explain in simple terms. Um, but again, you know, that's at a ten percent design, you know, when we get to a, a eighty percent. Or even a thirty percent design, those numbers will come more into focus. Um, but I had the same, the same thought as you, Commissioner, is if we get, you know, the this, that's great. Um, and then both states are going to be like, well, you're kind of fully funded. We're not going to step up to the plate anymore, right? Uh, even though they still have to step up some so that we can get enough state and local dollars in order to meet our twenty percent match. Um, or at least not, they don't have to step up. They just have to reallocate the dollars of the seventy-five million dollars. Federal or state grant from using um, like right now of the one we're getting this year. Five million is state dollars and ten million is federal dollars. So we would need to roll that state dollars, uh, that seventy-five million into all state dollars. Does that make sense?
Yep, nope, makes sense, Frank.
Okay, so I just wanted to let you guys know that that's the direction um, the, the, that the, we're going. Um, and um, if we get it, we'll find out in a couple of weeks. And if we get it, um, well, we'll, I'll throw a pizza party for the board.
Thank you and thank you for the update. Okay, with that, should we enter motion for lunch?
I couldn't hear Commissioner Christopher, but I think he made a motion for lunch. I think he did.
That's because Alyssa didn't turn my mic on, so I'm going to blame it on staff. Yes, I did.
All right, second.
Motion and second discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So see you back at one o'clock. Great. So it is one o'clock and I'd like to reopen the regular business meeting of the county commissioners. And we're going to start with a public hearing uh, for Title twelve. Uh, so I'm going to declare the public meeting open.
Title fifteen.
Or Title fifteen, sorry. Uh, declare the public hearing open advising the purpose of the hearing is a matter of amending. Clickitack County Code Title twelve.
No, Title fifteen.
Why did I do that? It's right there. My dyslexia is showing this afternoon. Title fifteen to consider mending county code Title fifteen to adopt the twenty twenty-one Washington State Building Code. Locally and add chapter fifteen point three oh for industrial scale solar. Uh, so staff, could you do a presentation for us?
I can. I actually have a modified uh, staff report. But I will read the whole thing. So everyone.
Okay.
Knows where I'm at. The twenty twenty-one code cycle adoption is scheduled for March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. After being delayed twice by the state. As part of the process for adoption as directed by R C W nineteen twenty-seven State Building Code. And WAC fifty-one fifty through fifty-one fifty-six. Clickitack County Updates Title fifteen to reflect which portions of the international. Clickatuck County updates Title fifteen to reflect which portions of the international codes and Washington State amendments are being adopted for the current code cycling effect. The county is required to adopt the specified codes and can make local revisions where allowed. In addition to Title fifteen, which is for building codes only, Title sixteen for factory assembled structures is amended at the same time if any changes are necessary. At this time, Title sixteen is being updated just to clarify language. The twenty twenty-one International Residential Code still allows flexibility of the jurisdiction adopt or waive residential sprinkler systems for single family dwellings. The department is recommending not adopting sprinkler requirements at this time. A great deal of discussion regarding the Wildland Urban Interface Code adoption has been ongoing at all levels. Current understanding, and that's from back and forth discussions with Washington Association of Building Officials and Emergency Management reviewing the, um, Senate Bill language where it gives the local jurisdiction the ability to make a map. Well, once I looked into it, our local jurisdiction already has a map that was done in two thousand eighteen in conjunction with DNR and Northwest Management Incorporated, which is more comprehensive and in-depth than the overall generalized DNR map. As of now, we can still use our CWPP plan, which is our Click, our, our county wildfire, um, preparedness plan. Until DNR redoes their map, which they estimate will be two to three years. That's the DNR map. And then the ones, yes, these are the ones that are in the already adopted CWPP. So chapter four of that packet through emergency management, which is what we had to do for FEMA and everything, what, five years ago, six years ago? They are already adopted with signatures by the county commissioners, the cities, the fire districts. We are allowed to use this until DNR's map is redone. And Jeff has a meeting with DNR next week and he will clarify some of this with them. But as of now, we do not have to remap. We don't need to panic. We already have it done. And we are allowed to use this for the time being. So that's the most current thing I can possibly provide on that. After several discussions with members of the public and further consideration, I am proposing that chapter fifteen thirty not be adopted specifically. Chapter fifteen twelve is already adopting the fire code as a whole, which is this entire book. By reference, fifteen thirty was just removing a very small portion of language. Not meant for planning, zoning, E O Z, any of that. It's just now in building code language where it never existed before. But it's caused way more confusion. And since we are already adopting the whole volume, it's kind of redundant to just pick out a small little portion of it. So at this point, I am, I am recommending that we don't adopt fifteen thirty. Studying a portion of the language, um, of a single chapter has just caused way more confusion than it, than it was meant to. It was meant to aid and it's, and it hasn't done that. And if we're adopting the whole volume, why confuse everyone by pulling out a small section of language?
Certification question?
Yes.
Um, so I, I asked staff yesterday to, um, highlight the sections of fifteen thirty, which is solar, that is county policy. And not all of the fire code that's in that book that we're held to regardless if we type it in the document or not type it in the document.
Correct.
Um, and there was two things. Item number C, which says a buffer of a hundred foot setback from property lines is a county policy. Um, and then, um, any amendments that we want to add. Technically, that's it. Everything else in that section is in the fire code book. And whether we pull it, fifteen thirty, pull the whole thing. All that other stuff is still fire code and is pertinent and is in this just because it's already in another section.
Correct, because fifteen twelve adopts the volume. And we couldn't make it green, so we highlighted it.
As I said, we picked green, but if you can't green, it's, that's fine.
Then as, as a little further, um, what I had Cindy do was highlight everything in Title fifteen that is ours local.
Well, that's why I was.
Just for clarification.
Just hopeful you would do that because I think a lot of people in the room are going to be pushing for removing the entirety of fifteen thirty. Uh, and I, I want to make it clear to them that if we so do so, that doesn't mean that A, B, D, F, E, all that got pulled. It, it's still in there.
It's still in there.
Fire code.
Correct.
And those rules still apply because they're state rules.
But they have nothing to do with planning, zoning, rezoning, anything like that. I am building code only.
Just hoping we can, please keep some of that clear. That was my question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? That's the end of my review, but I'm prepared to answer questions. We have copies of a lot of things. Um, just trying to be prepared for today.
I guess, uh, I do. I, I had some questions, so I met with you before. Um, and so I would just kind of go back to those. I had a question on, uh, change or you, change of use and or occupancy, uh, which you explained to me and you showed me that in the building code, they changed the definition and that's why we're changing the wording. Um, so people might see that yellow in their packet, but that's because it's a state update. Um, the word may, I believe you changed to shall.
It already said shall and I'm not sure how may got in.
Oh, I got a copy that said may.
Not sure how it got there.
We clarified that one.
Yeah, that shouldn't be there. It's already shall.
And then you clarified the, um, special outbuildings. Uh, and if, if you could give us a quick change, update on what that change is and or why on the special outbuildings, I think that might alleviate some questions going forward. And then that's all I had. It wasn't part of the solar fifteen thirty.
Correct. So special outbuildings were something that we've had in Clickatuck County for years. Um, during a brief portion of time, the board asked that we quit issuing special outbuilding permits. While they did some work on it, we brought them back in. And now as part of getting a special outbuilding permit, you do a statement of acknowledgement. And that's stating that you understand the county basically has no liability because we do not do plan review or formal inspections on special outbuildings. They also need to be owner-built, hundred feet from property lines, forty-five feet from properly permitted structures. Over the last several code cycles, we've worked on trying to clarify the language. Um, because basically it cited a section which does not exist in the building code book. And so people were looking for it and couldn't find it self-included. So we've removed that. And then instead of owner slash builder, we're saying property owner because the language of the acknowledgement says it should be built by the property owner and that was leading to confusion. So we just clarified it so that the language here would match the statement of acknowledgement and it says owner.
Do, do you remember what year the Board of Commissioners overhauled that or, or looked at it? I know it was the previous administration, but I'm kind of curious how long ago that was.
I want to say two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, two thousand eleven, twelve, thirteen, somewhere around there. We'd have to go look. I didn't look at that part. But it was quite a few years ago. And then, um, any legal removal of recorded instrument is at the owner's expense. And that's because when we do a permit, it stays with the property. It does not go to an individual. So if that property sells, then, you know, any future owners, any permits for houses or anything go with the property. We don't do it per owner. It's per parcel number. So that's the purpose of the language we changed in special outbuilding permits. And then the other question, I believe, um, was where from the state's exemptions? We removed number fourteen, which is minor construction and alteration activities, um, that exceed. If they don't exceed fifteen hundred dollars in any twelve month period. That was removed because it was a locally added thing by us and other jurisdictions. But what they've started to do is not have that language in there because a, a door replacement can be twenty-five hundred. So to say if it's less than fifteen hundred, you're, you're out of the ballpark.
Monetary number.
Yeah, you're out of the ballpark anymore. So if it's same for same, like for like, you know, your window gets broken and you replace it, you don't need a permit for that. But depending on the window or the door, you know, you could easily exceed that fifteen hundred.
Thank you for the clarification. Since I have nothing further.
Mr. Anderson? Is he online with us? Did you have any questions of staff?
We cannot hear you, sir.
Trying to connect. Still on mute.
Okay, this time?
Yeah, there you are.
Okay, triple muted apparently. Uh, I have no questions at this time. Um, I reserve my questions until after public testimony.
Great. Okay. So at this time, we're going to move to public testimony. For the record, just state your name and where you're from. And I think we'll work from, we do have a list today that people signed up to, uh, speak and, uh, then do we also recognize Zoom? Okay.
And I would also add, if I may, that you clearly state whether you're for or against and what parts you're for and against, so we can take notes and write it down.
Right, there was.
For everything, yeah.
Yeah, at the end, we can ask if they'd like to speak because we'd pulled the signup sheet. And we ask if you're in the room that you come to the podium, please. Uh, so the first is Greg Wagner.
Uh, Greg Wagner was deceased, live in Goldendale. Title fifteen thirty is poorly written, vague, open to interpretation and as written, unenforceable. Thorough review and rewriting is ordered, is in order. A clear, concise, enforceable code is essential to the protection of the safety, health and welfare of the citizens. Title fifteen should not be approved as written as it fails to address and resolve numerous, numerous issues and problems associated with industrial sale, solar and E S S battery storage. Fifteen thirty must go before the planning commission for a thorough review before approval can occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Um, Virginia Fitzpatrick.
My name's Virginia Fitzpatrick and, uh, I have some serious concerns about chapter fifteen. And I would ask that the county commission send it back to the planning department. I understand that those are state codes, but I also heard that there was some flexibility. And that's a very, two miles from town is not far enough. Now, we're seeing them pop up everywhere, but we haven't had a long enough time to discover what's really going to happen. It's kind of reminds me of the windmills. There's no place to recycle them. So what do we do in ten years, fifteen, twenty years? Where, what are we going to do with those? And I also like to, you know, I haven't been involved in this and I've just been trying to catch up. But there's a lot of unanswered questions. The code is vague and it's not very concise. And I understand if it's adopted from the state, but I did also hear the county may add some things. And I know there's stakeholders and I know it's already in the plans, but I really implore you to return it to the planning commission.
Thank you. So, Mr. West.
Let me ask you a clarification question.
Yes.
Did this ever, sorry.
It's my recollection that this was never before the planning commission. Is that correct?
I have nothing to do with the planning commission or the planning department.
Nor has this document ever been in history of life.
No, because it's building code. This has nothing to do with Title nineteen or what the planning commission is going to need to do as a whole. This is just building code, so it does not go before planning commission because state building code council are the ones that determine the language.
So not planning, not zoning, this is county adopting state building code.
Um, structures have nothing to do with land use, zoning, E O Z, rezoning.
Thank you.
Mr. West.
Okay, Dave West, Centerville. So I'm glad to hear that fifteen thirty is going to be put on hold for now. It was kind of boilerplate. I wholeheartedly concur with the written statements that Gene Callan has submitted to you. But let's not see how far down the road we can kick the can. Uh, comp plans a little ways behind, quickly area ordinance, so on. We could avoid a lot of trouble by acting quickly and well informed. Now, I realize maybe get a little ahead of it. Possibilities of an accident with one of these storage units is small. But you know, it's been centuries since a tsunami hit our west coast, but we have tsunami plans in place. Uh, it's better to err on the side of caution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barta?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Dave Barta, Goldendale. Uh, I, yeah, I'm glad to see that we are slowing down a little bit on fifteen thirty and, um, battery storage. I wrote comments and you can read them. I'm not going to read them for you. I'll leave them before I go. Um, I just think there are a lot of pieces in terms of citing them, in terms of keeping them so, safe, in terms of having emergency response plans in place at the beginning. I would just encourage you to not uphold the minimum standard, which is what they says they are, but to, uh, employ a standard that just affects the peace, safety and health of the citizens at whole. Um, I know that Ms. Ward spoke a little bit. I'm going to switch now to wildland interface. This is the entire respondable or what, what can be responded to that's in there because my understanding is in fifteen thirteen, and I may be correct and she may correct me right here. There's just not a lot to read because some of those pieces aren't finished yet. I encourage you to keep the, at least just based on that to keep the hearing open for later, uh, spoken and written comment as well. Because there is a lot to consider, even when we look at maps and I understand there's a plan in place and all those things, but the first time I have some involvement with fire services and the first time I've seen those maps is today. That could be my fault, but I, I need to learn a little bit more. So I encourage you to keep the hearing process open for whatever time it takes to address it properly. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Elred, you came in late. Did you wish to speak today? We'd taken away the signup sheet. You're good? Gave you the chance.
We, uh, I, I think, uh, there needs to be just a separate chapter, including solar and wind. Because these are critical issues that are, uh, being, uh, dumped on, uh, people in other areas where these have outlived their usefulness and their aging. And because of the documents that were presented to protect the people were not properly written. And these enables these people to walk away. And the, uh, these developers, they want the most flexible regulations there are. And we have a state executive department that is completely in line with what these developers want. So it's going to be up to you people, the county. And this reminds me of a, I asked, uh, Commissioner Soder one time, I said, these directives and everything that the state is issuing to the county, who's in charge of the county? And he said, And he said, we're a franchise of the state. So who's writing the documents that are, are are these documents being writ- written? Right here by the county officials, or are these documents being written by a bureaucracy? And sent to the county to be approved and you put your name on it. But in either way, the future of this county depends on the commissioners. Their decisions, their policies, what we're going to have to live with, and you've got twenty five year life expectancy. Of these renewables, and you're going to be left with wasteland. That is not usable for anything. It's been devastated. And it's going to be replaced with solar, I mean with nuclear or gas. So the decisions you make today will determine a hundred years from now what this landscape will look like. So it's important that the county stand up and say, you know, these are regulations are not. Uh, going to be compromised because these protect the citizens. And I think you better take a real hard look at what you're doing today because it's not temporary. You're affecting this county for, like I said, hundreds of years, what you decide on the regulations and how these. Renewable energy developers proceeds. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. And I don't know if we didn't, I would I would like to finish in the room and then I'll go to to online.
Briefly, can I reiterate? Chapter nineteen twenty seven R C W is state building code.
Right.
I have nothing to do with planning, zoning, critical area ordinance, none of that. I just want to make that clear because I think people are still confused. We are just adopting the twenty twenty one volumes of the state building code.
Sorry, for clarification, I think Mr. Eldred did have it correct. The state gives us a minimum standard of which we can make it harder.
We can't make it easier. I can't make it easier, but I can make it harder, but I have nothing to do with planning or zoning.
Right, right, right. In the building code.
Correct. I'm only.
State minimum, which comes in that book.
This is one of the.
Many books, and that's our minimum, and then we can hit higher standards than that if we want to.
Correct, but then we present it to the state for approval. I would present it to state building code council. If Clickattack County wants to do something different. They have a form then that the county fills out and sends to state building code council. For approval, and then they have it on record that in Clickattack County, the rule is X Y Z in addition to. But I, you know, I I think people are still confused that. I am somehow affecting planning and I am not. So if the planning commission and the planning department says, hey. It's five hundred feet before you have an E S S storage building. But the building code says fifty or seventy five, it's the greater distance. It's the most stringent rule that applies. I just kind of want to throw that out there so people can understand.
Amend. Lynn's cuts. Once planning. Yeah.
Sorry, yes, we can amend anything at any time.
So going forward, it'll be.
Yes, just trying to help people understand that I I am not affecting zoning or planning.
Okay, perfect. Um, and I'd just like to ask one more time in the room before I move to online. If somebody didn't get to sign up to speak and would like to speak, if you raise your hand or come forward, I'd give you the chance. Um, so seeing none online, uh Tracy, Tracy two six six.
Yes, hello commissioners. Um, so um, before I start, um, I'd like to just get some clarification because I had trouble logging in and didn't hear the first part of Lynn's. Um, um. Uh, Lynn's, uh, you know, what she said, so um, I did hear though that there's a map. That through the C W P P, there's a map. Can you um. Explain that or tell where the map is or what maps she's referring to that has the risks already?
If you go to emergency management department, you can look on there, the whole volume is available. That was from twenty eighteen, and then there's another one that's all risks for twenty twenty. And that is where I found it. I also scanned those mat- or a few of the maps. There's a multitude of maps in there. I just scanned two for brief. Conversation today, but the whole entire, like three hundred and some pages is on the emergency management website.
Okay, this is the first I've ever heard of that. It would have been nice to know that weeks ago when uh we knew the hearing was coming up.
Well, we did not realize we were able to utilize it at this point until. They made their last minute decisions on February twenty ninth, and then that's where the cities and counties and towns of the state. Finally found out that that locally we can use our own map while D N R re-does theirs, which they estimate to be two to three years. This has been ongoing. I mean, we had no final answers, and I've been monitoring it as closely as I could. And they didn't know at the state level.
Okay, now I have a uh uh just a um question for the commissioners. Do, did any of you folks know there was a map on emergency management or have you looked at that map?
Um, if you'll go ahead with your comments, Tracy, then we can answer you.
Well, I I I need to know if, well, I need to know if you have seen that map. I haven't seen it. First I ever heard about it. But right now, we're talking about adding something in that is not building. It's not building codes, it's planning, it's trees. Um, we don't even have our uh critical infant. Critical areas done, and this deals with the critical areas. If if, you know, that's the defensible space of this, and I really don't understand why we would put it through anyway. Because sixteen twenty was approved, and now the the S C E B, the building. Uh, uh, department is is just just held a hearing the other day on the sixteenth of February. To discuss changing this code that we're adopting. So if if you're familiar with with Hood River, okay, Hood River adopted the seven sixty two code. And people's insurance doubled or tripled and some lost it. And there was, they they came back and there was a lot of people appealing, and then they put in code. Uh, um, the bill uh number eighty, which says that insurances can't use the map. To um, to do insurance, you know, that they can't use the risk map. And then uh um bill eighty two kept went through that said, oh, well, our map is no good. We're going to have to redo it. But there's nothing you can do about this legislative uh seven sixty two bill. Everybody's still going to have to uh have defensible space and all that. But my my real concern is in the law. So in the law, R C W seventy six oh four zero one five, it talks about D N R having the ability to find. Find people um if they have um, if they're negligent, if there's forest fire. Burn somebody else or burns um D N R land that they can be fined. And it also says that a lien can be um, can be gotten. Um, on the the property owner's home for these expenses. And I want to, I I haven't seen anything in this code that we're adopting on the enforcement. On whether um liens can be taken out if the fire chief or the building inspector or D N R. Do uh, you know, say that our defensible space wasn't good enough that, you know, that's why it burned or. That uh we we were at fault for burning, you know, for somebody else's house burning. So without R C Ws in this, you can't pass it.
We'll try to address, uh, we'll see if we have a few answers for you, so.
R C W nineteen twenty seven zero three one, state building code, adoption, conflicts, and opinions. Except as otherwise provided in this chapter, there shall be in effect in all counties and cities in the state. Cities, the state building code, which shall consist of the following codes. Building code, residential code, mechanical code, fire code, portions of the international wildland urban interface code. Uniform plumbing code, so list all of our codes there. And then if I go over to five sixty where it references me for the wildland urban interface code. Night, R C W nineteen twenty seven five sixty, in addition to the provisions of nineteen twenty seven zero three one, which I just read. Referencing all the other codes. The state building code shall, upon the completion of statewide mapping of wildland urban interface areas. Consist of the following parts of the two thousand eighteen international wildland urban interface code. Published by the International Code Council. That's my charging statement. Now, Senate Bill sixty one twenty has changed this language just slightly. They did not agree on it until the twenty ninth. And that's where it says, and it says it here also under number two, all counties, cities, and towns may adopt. Um, a portion or in part, and then it added a number four and a number five. In my mess of everything, I'm not sure where I have it, um, but that's where it added that until the county. Or until. Exactly, they added number four and number five. The number four of the Senate bill says all counties, cities, and towns may complete their own wildfire hazard. And base level wildfire risk map. For use in applying the code enumerated in subsections one and two.
Has this bill been signed by the governor yet?
I believe it has. I, or very close to.
Well, it's um, yeah, it's not official until signed, but I'm not even sure it's been signed.
Yeah, yeah, but county, cities, and towns may continue to use locally adopted wildfire risk maps until completion of a state. Wide wildfire hazard map and base level wildfire risk map for each county of the state. For R C W forty three thirty five eighty is completed. That's where D N R is going to redo the map. But again, if if we had this awareness. Weeks ago, I would have been able to say, hey, we already have that local established county map, but they were.
And included it in the packet.
Exactly, but.
Said I.
It came down to the wire. But I mean, and it, it's it's not a great answer, but.
Timeframe on when the state. Um, hate to use the word mandate, but what is the law and when we must have an up to date building code, title fifteen and sixteen? Filed by the state or we are in violation of the law?
March fifteenth is our adoption date for title fifteen to adopt the twenty twenty one code books. That's literally. All it's doing.
And if not, we are in violation of state law.
Correct, because the R C W says we need to do it locally. Now, D N R, we don't have to enforce the wildland urban interface code portion. Until D N R is done remapping, but all of this.
Changed the law.
Exactly, all of this was very last minute, so I had no time to have it out there for everyone to read.
Great.
I hope they change the law because I'm in a risk area nine and my insurance is going to go nuts.
It's it's not already a good method. So good. So hopefully that helps clarify also.
Is there anyone else online? Sherry.
Afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Um, I'm happy to hear um Ms. Ward's uh suggestion to at least pull fifteen thirty. Um, I would recommend that for educational purposes. Like Greg Wagner's comment that was thoroughly researched and thoroughly um looked into and suggestions were made. How our county could be more stricter. I continue to hear that we, yes, we have to follow the state law. However, our county can make stricter requirements and uh building codes or. Whatever was all there, as a lot of people are interested in the wildland uh urban interface and insurances and. Stuff like that, how our county and, you know, Mr. Christopher said, he'll be affected, how we're looking into more stringent. Um, things that protect, you know, words and titles and codes and ordinance and the resolutions. Oh my, all these things we do, but these titles, if they are going to run our county. And we have the option to make them more stringent than what the code does, then we should do that. We should do that. We should take time for uh, I mean, I understand adopting the code books. On a date that's set by the state. And yes, okay, but we can also kind of table fifteen and sixteen. To look at what really our county is about and what really we want to see our future. And it is, if you are you, the Clickattack County of people are given the ability. To regulate this county borderline and what sits in it. I suggest we really look at it because you see right there, you know, the urban, wildland urban interface. Um, the setbacks, you know, I think all titles should match every other title. One title has five to fifteen hundred, keep it consistent, you know, so I guess. Thank you, Ms. Ward, again for suggesting that fifteen thirty was too vague and and should not be included. Because that's just wiggleworm for these, and I I want to continue to remind our county. These are foreign corporations, these renewable energies. And as everybody has said, a hundred years from now, we're, you know, we're leaving this to our children and our children's children. And we must be responsible, and if we're a target with our beautiful farmlands and open fields. Then let's uh get more stringent and please table these uh, you know, adopt what you need to do for the state so they don't get mad, but let's. Table some of these, these words that we put as our. Is what we call Clickattack County titles and that we're told those are enforceable. Even if we have to get approval from state, let's work on making sure we're protecting our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. I don't think there are questions or clarifications, so.
I am on the uh website for emergency management.
Um, it's Tracy, so thank you. Um, anyone else on Zoom this afternoon would like a chance to speak? One more time, is there anyone else out there? So seeing no one, uh, Mr. Anderson, did you have any clarifications or anything that you'd like to add for the public questions?
Uh, this is just a question for staff. Um, I. I was aware of the C W P P maps that we did way back when and was involved with those. Um, those maps are very high level. The last time I remember, they were not at a parcel specific. How we couldn't adopt that and use that for building codes, um, could we?
That's a question that I posed to the building official group and that Jeff King will discuss with D N R next week. When he has a meeting with them, so we have a little more information to go on. But it was, it was more county specific than it was broad as the D N R map is. But again, that's a discussion that now we know the direction we're going, that D N R has to remap. That emergency management will have with D N R and then emergency management and myself will meet. Over the next several years to determine where we go.
Right, so so are you providing us these maps as just reference material? You are not asking to adopt them as part of uh fifteen thirteen?
Correct, just as reference material, because the only charging language is that we adopt the W U E code. But then it's basically the states kicked it down, you know, the line a few years because D N R has to redo the map. So we're adopting it by reference, but there's no formal language to adopt. Because we have to wait until the new map is done.
Okay, so so what you're clearly saying is that um, the the map is just reference. The adoption of the W U E code um will not have any impact on Clickattack County. Until two years or likely, however long it takes them to come up with the new uh severity map. That will have to be parcel specific.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make that very clear cuz there were some concerns with um what I was hearing from from testimony.
The the new map will need to be more interactive and. Have the ability to be updated locally by the local fire marshal, which we need. Um but there's more work to do than, and they realized that after the DNR map was published.
Thank you, ma'am.
Great, thank you. So we are at the close of public testimony and uh. Discussion by the board opens, is there any more discussion between the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
So. Don't we have to open it back up for further testimony?
It's last call for testimony, yes.
Okay. So um last call for public testimony. Oh, thank you, come forward. I changed your mind. Good thing they caught me.
Well, guys, here's the thing, turn the news on, look at Texas, over a million acres burned, okay, there's. I think it even went into Oklahoma, thousands of cattle gone, towns gone, two people killed. That's as of right now, okay, they're they're tracing it back to electrical company. They trace it back to somebody here, are they gonna pay for millions and millions and millions of dollars? That's what we got to look for, right there, the health, Texas of all places. Thank you.
Thank you. So last call, anyone else or anyone else on Zoom that hasn't had a chance to speak? So seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for further testimony and open it up for discussion by board if there is any, Mr. Christopher.
So I guess I'm torn. Because uh one of the comments is that we should make our codes more stringent. Um the problem with making your codes more stringent than state standards is you are stripping the personal freedoms and liberties of the people. Uh that have to abide by those codes, so this board, at least while I've been sitting here. Has been trying to unwind overburden some regulation. Uh that is not mandated by the state, we just did it with title twelve. Um that will allow builders to build properties at a cheaper rate and uh give you affordable housing. Overburden some regulation costs money and takes away from your freedoms and liberties, but in the same regard. We can impose overburden some regulation to protect the health, safety and welfare of the general public. So if we believe the state doesn't go far enough. Uh and we need to protect the health, safety and welfare of the general public, then by all means, overregulation is a way to do that. I guess for the most part in fifteen thirty, since ninety nine point nine percent of it is fire code. That will be adopted even if we remove fifteen thirty in its entirety. We're still adopting ninety nine point nine percent of it. What we're removing is the opportunity to add regulation. If we leave it or remove all that ninety nine percent, but we leave in other things like the setback number and we change it. We could change it to setback can be five hundred feet, we can change it to setback can be a mile. We have that authority, if we do nothing, we're not creating. More stringent regulation to protect health and safety and welfare, so I look at this and I look at this as an opportunity. An opportunity to increase the setbacks, an opportunity to mandate. That they not only train facility operation and maintenance staff, but they train our local firefighters. Because they have no idea how to put out a lithium ion battery fire. We can mandate. Fire mitigation plans and and how they are processed in this document. Uh we can restrict lithium ion batteries. Countywide, or we can say within four miles of a town. Um this is an opportunity to place said more restrictive. Um in there, but I'm hearing both testimony that says throw the whole thing out. But then I'm also hearing make more stringent laws. While I do believe currently. The planning commission will hear solar argument again. To be able to take up battery storage and setbacks and population density criteria. And should you have lithium ion batteries? We all know prevailing winds are west, should they be two miles westerly of town, so if there's a fire, you're doing a full on evacuation of a city for two weeks? Until we can get enough concrete to put it out, is that a good spot, they're gonna hear this. Under the current makeup of the board. But how long is it gonna take, is it gonna get done this year? Or do we have to rely on whoever gets elected next year to continue the process? Um I don't wanna wait, I don't wanna kick the can down the road, I've been trying to do this for three years. And yeah, sure, great, we finally got a solar moratorium, that helps. But we need to take up battery storage and every time I've pushed for a motion to ban them, I can't get it through. Um it's we, the planning commission needs it, but then the planning commission has all this stuff on its plate and this is the last damn thing on its list. Does it get done this year, I doubt it. Um no matter how much we want, cuz they have the CAO and the criti- or in the SMP and the, they're just not gonna get to it. So I would hate the opportunity. Right here before us to impose some more stringent regulation and us to not do it. And just say, no, let's just throw out fifteen thirty and. Keep the status quo because we all, everybody in this room, well, everybody that's testified so far, the shero words in everybody's mouth. Doesn't believe we go far enough. If we throw it all out and we throw out all of fifteen thirty, we're not going farther, we're just keeping the status quo. And I think I agree with you, we don't go far enough. So if that's what the public wants is to throw out fifteen thirty, I'm I'm fine with going that route. But I I think we can use this opportunity if there's enough consensus of the board. To impose some more stringent regulations on some of these things. And do it right here in this document, which then just like staff said, building planning doesn't matter, whichever the most stringent one applies. We can use this document to fix that down.
But my building code rules, I can't. Extend to anything outside of building code.
Correct, but this would be the. The precedent or the stepping stone to amending. Planet code to say the same thing, we just made a building code.
And if we want to simply establish a further setback, that could be done under fifteen twelve. The same as we amended the building code portion to include special outbuildings. We don't have to do it in a separate chapter, we could do it in fifteen twelve and say. amended locally to be a minimum fire separation setback of.
If we were to. Have consensus on lithium ion battery storage, would that be able to be in here without fifteen thirty?
It's in fifteen twelve already.
So we can make our own, it's already in the fire code, that's already in here, if we remove fifteen thirty, so we can make a more stringent regulation in fifteen twelve.
Yes.
Even if we take out fifteen thirty, so technically, we can take out fifteen thirty and then work on some of these other items I mentioned if the board so chose to do so.
Yes, and if we adopted it today, just straightforward, without any extra language. We're meeting the state's deadline of March fifteenth. Now that doesn't mean we have to wait three years until they adopt the new code cycle. To locally amend title fifteen again to make more stringent rules. We can reopen it ourselves at any time. This is just the mandated code cycle change by the state, but. Locally, if we a year from now say, okay, we've decided on these setbacks and now we need to make title fifteen say. This, we we have the available availability to do.
So that brings back the timeframe, we are where we're at today on the fifth. If this board so chose to use this document to increase the setback to a hundred and twenty five feet. Or well, miles and seven feet or whatever number it came up with. We would then be changing the document, we would have to go back to public hearing. Have another public hearing, have another two week posted notice of which then we would miss the state law of March fifteen. So I think what I'm hearing is. We can remove fifteen thirty and adopt the document as is like the majority of the public has asked for. But that does not stop this board from scheduling a workshop next month. To discuss making amendments to the brand newly adopted. Title fifteen that would potentially add some more stringent regulations on solar projects.
Correct.
Well, and just to make it very clear. Um that work is the work of the planning department and planning commission and then we.
But not for my title fifteen.
I disagree.
I do, I do not work with the planning commission, that's zoning.
Right, yes, but if they do their due diligence in the work at the planning department, then they make suggestions to you off of their work.
Not off to her because she's a, she has nothing to do.
To amend that.
She has nothing to do.
If, if as the, as a whole, the county has say redo planning commission and and change something in title nineteen. Title fifteen can simply reference title nineteen because that's zoning.
Okay.
Now, if you direct me for fire separation to do a certain setback. Then I have the authority for that, but when I issue a building permit, if title nineteen is updated to be a mile.
Correct.
And mine says a hundred feet, when I issue a building permit, it's the greater distance.
It would be vice versa in the planning as well, my point is.
Zoning would overrule.
Clarification, we can update it two ways, we can either go through the planning side first and go through planning commission, which is the plan. And I think we'll get done in about forty seven years. Uh based on what I've seen in the last three years. Nothing against planning commission, it's just time consuming and it can't seem to get done. Or we can do it with the building code, which is done right here with some accountability. And then planning can follow suit of what we did, there's policy and there's planning commission and we can set the policy right here.
Right, but we don't have to do it with fifteen thirty, we could do it under fifteen twelve and say amended locally to be.
I just wanted to clarify that we don't have to wait for the planning commission, we have. Policy that we can.
Okay, and and for me, um I have a question about if you did it through fifteen. And we sat in a workshop together, who are we to pick those numbers and how would we come up with the right numbers? Um to make sure, like you said, could be twelve feet, could be twelve miles, we would be picking a random number. If we did our due diligence, which we are the directors to the planning department. For the work that we need done and also the planning commission is our advisory board, um. I have served on planning commission ten years and there were many times that. When we were very busy, we separated out into work groups and we would meet in a work group and we would work. Once or twice a week, we'd even meet in white salmon, so other members could come in and get that work done. So it it isn't that it would take forty seven years to get it done, it's at the direction of the commissioners. Working with our departments and our planning commission to get it done.
How large were the work groups?
Five people.
So three people would be arbitrary to pick a number, but five people would be okay?
No, because they would have different um. Tools in their toolbox to get that done, they would have the planning director to assist them with information. Uh that is their job to assess some of that information, work their way through it as a diverse group, where we're a board of three. Would we really have the time to, sorry about that, to um to work on that, so.
I I I appreciate the comments.
I'm I'm just looking at.
If for my own forethought and and foreshadowing, based on how long I've been trying to do this.
Well, we didn't even have planning commission before this year and they were reconstituted and working, so. Now the goal is to get them more and more and more functionable.
You didn't have planning commission last year?
I don't know if planning commission was reconstituted. Uh last winter was when they started meeting again, before that, there were, there was quite a long time between two thousand eighteen and twenty twenty three. The planning commission wasn't meeting. We didn't have meetings, uh because I was on planning commission then and we weren't having meetings.
They also had COVID, so after COVID, they started back up again.
Yeah, and COVID had nothing to do that we weren't assigned work. Um Jake, did you have anything?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I feel we may be getting a little off topic here, um this is uh. Building code, not the planning department, um and discussion about the planning is it seems to be a little off topic. Uh my question for Ms. Lynn is um what I'm hearing primarily is the battery storage. And the concerns with battery storage, under the fire code, what are the setbacks for battery storage?
If the quantity is within what the building code considers factory industrial use. Then the setback could be as little as thirty feet. If the, if the quantity is over that and it goes to a hazard occupancy. Then the maximum is seventy five feet. For fire separation distance under the building code.
As it is.
As it is, correct, and that is assuming those structures have suppression and all of that. Um but I, again, I'm dealing with this structure that houses those batteries. And if they choose to stack batteries not in a structure, I have, I'm not, I'm the structure, I'm. That part of it.
Uh yes, so. In order for us to set setback standards on building codes, just like the code council. That needs to be set uh with some sort of facts. So that we have findings of facts for the reasons and rationale why we are choosing to make these decisions. It it cannot be arbitrary and capricious. I would love to move forward with setting and making changes in fifteen thirteen. But we have not been provided studies, documents, plans, anything from the IPCC. Any of the other organizations in which that are try- that are attempting to set setback standards for buildings and safety. Uh for these battery facilities. I think that the best thing that we can do is we have a a date in which, you know, we have to be compliant, we have to pass it by the fifteenth. Um I have, I would prefer to move forward uh with a workshop later. To talk about any potential changes to fifteen thirteen based on studies and facts. So that we can set set setbacks um with factual background. Um the update to the codes, um and I also wanted to say thank you very much. Uh I know it was staff that wrote fifteen thirty in an attempt to um try to get in front of these issues. Um so thank you very much, uh Director Ward, um but. In order to do service to the public, um this is something, you know, we've been talking about for years. Um I think the best thing we can do is to get the information that we have. Um so I am personally fine with removing for fifteen thirty. With the um with the intent that we will be holding um workshops to potentially update the building code. Um before the next cycle.
When is the next cycle? Two or four years from now?
Three to five, yeah, roughly, roughly because we're just now adopting the twenty one and twenty four. Um it was supposed to have been adopted July of last year.
And by the next, I wasn't talking about three years out, I was saying, let's put it on the workshop, but. Once staff goes and does their research to uh bring back um findings, something that we can. Uh follow with findings of that.
And we don't have to wait for the cycle to update. Any other?
Would it be amenable? to the board to schedule such workshop where we can give the building director guidance on what documents we would like to see? So we can have an overall game plan of this versus just sending her out to collect what she thinks we may want to see?
I'm waiting for Jake.
I'd, sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Zoller. I have no problem having that discussion during any meeting as well, you know. And I think each of us can do a little bit of our own research to find, you know, but we have, in order for us to make decisions, we have to be able to find facts. We can't just be like, oh, I want, I want three hundred feet, and somebody else says, I want five hundred feet. Well, we'll get sued if we, if we don't show that we have facts behind us for the reasons and rationale why we're adopting something.
I, I would agree with that statement, but I would also say that for the most part, any number you pick is going to be somewhat arbitrary and capricious based off whatever factual information you currently have. Somebody else might be looking at different factual information to get their arbitrary and capricious number. But with that, I think we might have a head start with some of the documents that have already been provided to us with how far-reaching some of this is. So I, I am, I guess to end my discussion, I am okay with removing fifteen thirty in its entirety and moving forward with the adoption of the rest of the chapter to meet the code and comply with state law. And I'm thankful for the board willing to at least have these public discussions in workshops on Zoom on how we might move forward.
One difference, Commissioner Christopher, if I may, Madam Chair. Remember, what we adopt has to go back to the Code Council, and so that is definitely why with we, if we pick, you know, our rationale, if we can rationalize why we picked it and there's facts and studies behind it, it is not arbitrary and capricious. Because otherwise, if we just pick a number, what is the likelihood that the Code Council will, you know, agree with what we've chosen?
I was, yes, I, I agree with that statement, but I was thinking more than just setbacks. I was thinking battery storage regulation too.
And some of that would be better served under planning and zoning. Because that
Because if it doesn't have a building.
Right, right, because
All those batteries are in a building, but
Correct.
It'd be done both ways.
Right. We don't want to
Just regulate the building and if they don't want to put batteries. If they want to just lay batteries out on the ground, then they can do that through planning. I don't think they're gonna do that. But same idea, I would say that you can do a battery ban on a township and range or geographical location or a population density or a distance to a population center, just like we did the prohibition on solar without going through the Planning Commission. You, you could do that as a policy. With that, I'm, I'm done, and I would be willing to make a motion if the board was entertaining such a thing. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. With that, I would move for the adoption of Title fifteen, removing Sections fifteen dot thirty and accepting of the rest of it.
Do I hear a second, Jake, or Mr. Anderson?
I, I can't agree with that one at this time. I think we need to, to take an interim step. But I want second motion.
Right. Does he have
You can either
This is just a process.
Second for the second
It's just a process.
Nor the, the motion can just die on the table and you can wait for another one.
I will step down in a second. So motion?
Okay. Are we, are we in discussion?
Yes.
Excuse me. The reason I didn't second the motion is we have traditionally always, especially on something like this, left the record open for written comment until Friday it closed, while directing staff to come back next Tuesday with the revised document so that if we have anything else, we can then have discussion and then we can pass it at that time, which I believe is still before the fifteenth.
So that leaves staff adequate time to get things done with two days or whatnot after the, whatever the calendar looks like?
Cindy's already prepared it just in case we went that route. She has multiple versions saved so we can meet that deadline. I am gone next week, but she can come down with the revised title.
I, I would also note that I apologize, I hate to be like this, but we did not close the public hearing in, in order to make a motion or anything. So we need to follow that. That's the other reason why I didn't second the motion.
Thank you, Jake. So do we need to close the public hearing and entertain revised motion, whatever?
So technically, if he's, if he's gonna hold us to parliamentary procedure, we need to take a vote on the vote of which we can't vote yes on because of parliamentary procedure, and then we'd have to make the motion again after you close the hearing. Do we need to take a vote and say no, just for parliamentary procedure, not that it means anything? And then you can go on with the hearing, and then we can have another motion at the board, so chose to do so. So finish your, we picked a vote, sorry.
So
We have a motion on the table.
All those in favor?
Nay.
Nay? All those opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. Motion dies, now we can continue the hearing.
So we can close the public hearing to further testimony and ask for a motion.
Is the board entertaining of a motion? I'm more than happy to make one. Once again, I will make the motion that we adopt Title fifteen with the note that we will be removing Chapter fifteen dot three zero, which is industrial solar, and accepting the rest of it in its entirety.
Anything else?
I think Commissioner Anderson wants to leave the hearing open until next week. So if you like my motion, second it. If you don't, let it die, and we'll do it again next week.
So I think standing by standard procedure, we will let the motion die.
All right. Are you, I can give a motion, Madam Chair, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't, you know, usually care to stand on the parliamentary procedure, but this is a, a public hearing with an update to the code and ordinances, so I think we, we need to stand on there's also rules about two reading, which is why we always done the second week. Madam Chair, I would make a motion to continue the public hearing for next week, Tuesday, closing the, the hearing to any further oral testimony while leaving the hearing open to further written testimony until Friday at five P M. With the, while directing staff to make the changes to the document as has been heard and presented by the board.
I will second if that's what it takes to get it done.
Thank you. Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So the motion passes. Thank you very much.
I would also just like to say thank you to Director Ward for all of her hard work on this as well as keeping track of the legislation and the, the last-minute changes.
Okay, so we move on to our second public hearing for the day in the matter of amending the Clickidat County Code Title sixteen standards. And staff to have a review.
As part of relooking at Title fifteen on our, on our cycle, we also check Title sixteen to see if there's anything that needs clarified or if Labor and Industries has added anything that we need to include. So Title sixteen at this time is only being updated to clarify language. The language that is being clarified is that we cannot tell someone how to install a manufactured home. It's a factory-assembled structure. The manufacturer, Labor and Industries, and engineer, those are the only individuals that can prescribe anchoring methods for manufactured homes. The Building Department can't do that. So we're just clarifying that in the language, and then we are adding language that once a manufactured home is installed, that the systems need to be verified to make sure the plumbing is working, the water is working. Does not have to be by us directly. It can be by whomever installed the home. But Ellen, I does want a verification that everything is in working order. But we don't go in, we do the outside, so that's where we don't do the verification, but we get it.
You get a copy of the
We get a copy of it, yes, and that's the only items that we are changing for Title sixteen.
Okay.
Questions?
I have none. Jake, any questions from you, Mr. Anderson?
No, ma'am.
Okay, great. So we'll open the public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment and testimony. There was no one on the sign-up sheet for Title sixteen. If anybody has changed their mind, you can raise your hand and come forward. So that's not as interesting as a subject, I guess. So those online. Is there anyone on Zoom who'd like to comment on the Title sixteen? That's gonna be a simple one. So I'll ask one last time if there's any further public comment. If not, we'll close the public hearing for further public testimony, and we'll have a discussion by the board.
I have none.
Mr. Anderson?
I have none. If you're ready for a motion.
Ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, having the updates of Title sixteen before us, having heard no public testimony at this time, I would move to keep the public hearing open for one week and close it to any further oral testimony, continuing to keep it open for written testimony until five P M. on Friday, directing staff to have a proposal for us for adoption next week.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just for clarification, was that consensus to have further discussions on amending Title fifteen in the next available workshop? Is that gonna be this month or a future month, or do we know? Since we have people in the room that might care?
I'm open to setting a separate workshop, whatever's workable for my seatmates. I'm willing to work on it anytime.
What do we have on the next workshop?
Even next Tuesday afternoon, what, what works for time to get it moving?
I am not available next week. We're at conference.
Okay.
Oh, I guess maybe the best idea is for each of us to do a little bit of research about what direction we'd like to send staff on for looking at the available documents and white papers and research that's been done throughout the, the states. I've been trying to do a little bit ahead of time for what other states have set for, for building setbacks already, but it's time-consuming. I would say next Tuesday, but since staff won't be here, maybe the Tuesday after, we can set it in, in afternoon for discussion.
Amenable to that if we can, as it's only going to be a guidance meeting. I don't know that it's going to be super time-consuming, so if we can like throw a half hour two Tuesdays from now or whenever it's
The twelfth? The twelfth? Oh, the twelfth is next week.
And the twenty-first, I have a scheduled doctor's appointment.
We'll take the nineteenth, though.
The nineteenth should work.
Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
Great.
Good.
Okay, works.
If, if I may, Madam Chair, I just wanted to, I forgot. I wanted to say thank you to all the, the testifiers that we had on the Title fifteen. We, I read all their emails, and I appreciate everyone's dedication and hard work looking into the information.
Thank you. Mr. Christopher, anything else?
No, I would just echo that.
So I think that concludes our public hearings for the day. But thank you, staff, for all your work and preparing several choices, Kathy. I appreciate you being
Editing and coloring things.
Anticipating us. Their signature page.
We didn't ask.
Yeah, I did. I'm such a helpful person. Yes, yes. Yes, in the afternoon. Yes, they're open. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
On our typical board meeting days, the only time for the public to make oral comment or anything is in the morning during public comment. So we will be having our workshop in the afternoon discussing matters of the county, but you won't have a chance to get into that discussion.
For the workshop, you can come in and listen and be a part of it.
Nine o'clock in the morning is citizen comment.
Yes.
We'll have the, we'll start the meeting at nine o'clock. We'll take citizen comment before we do anything for the day. And then we'll finish our day's work after citizen comment. Then we get lunch, then we come back from lunch and we continue our day's work. These are the rarities when we have a public hearing, because then you'll get afternoon comment as well for the hearing.
Oh, nice. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, coming. Good. I'm glad you're participating. Thank you.
We can hang our gavel and enter chat.
Okay. We have some more business to conclude. If you, if you could visit in the hallway, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Got you a scabble twice today. Okay. I'm gonna get my, get my mother. Oh, you don't want that. That would be a problem. So for, so moving on, we have new business with lead steering committee discussion. Is that lead entity steering, lead entity?
Legislative steering.
Oh, a legislating steering.
That was ledge, ledge steering.
Ledge, got it. We need a G in there.
I asked after I asked after forward you the ledge steering document with the pages to review. I just wanted to make sure both of you had a chance to look that over that before I start the conversation.
I did have a chance to read it. I don't know about Commissioners older.
Yes.
Okay, so they pushed us for a vote at that meeting on whether or not to move forward. I know the the weighted voting, you know how slippery slopes work, the weighted voting thing that came up in November is kind of rearing its head again. And you know, this was a weighted voting system to set the priorities for the large counties. With the small counties as well as the, if it dealt with all counties. It's kind of an internal policy. But I didn't have a chance to review it with my seatmates. So I wanted to get that in front of you and then also give you, first off, see what your thoughts were. But more importantly, let you know how it kind of went. Do you guys have any thoughts on how that was designed to work?
I'm, I'm curious to see what the chair thinks.
Well, I know last year I did, I was able to attend one of the meetings late into the session and it was pretty obvious what the weighted system would do to small counties like us. So I would like to hear what you have say going forward, Jake, what any new ideas are. Or if that's been able to be adjusted to equalize that out a little bit.
Well, that was in the document, which is what we're discussing.
Right, but I'd like to hear his conversation on it.
Okay, Commissioner Christopher, did you have anything?
I guess I would add this is better. But I guess my main worry is if they say one member, one vote, which is fine, that kind of keeps it where it is. And that doesn't give a King County too much sway. My worry is the 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 statement that the Legislative Steering Committee is prohibited for adopting any policy positions on proposed legislation during an active legislative session unless eighty-five percent of those present are in approval. That is an absolute super majority. And if King County and whatnot disagree, they can just not show up per day. And even though all the other rural counties want to, and besides that, I kind of look at it that how how far in advance do we really know what legislation is gonna get pushed at the legislature? So we, we, the Lead Steering Committee would have to set its priorities in the fall before our fall conference in November. When we hadn't have rumblings of what they're gonna try to do in the legislature, but we really know the bills. And then once we know the bills, we can't, as a lead steering, take a vote and and be either yea or nay without an eighty-five percent position. And I think while this is better than the the, God, I'm just gonna say it, the joke that was the last produced piece for us that would give us like one tenth of one percent of a vote. This is better than that, but I I just, I think there's so many pieces of legislation that you you just wouldn't even be able to take a stand on during that legislative session to have any choice at all. But in some regards, that's good because if it ate by, you know, bipartisan at eighty-five percent, you probably shouldn't do it anyway. So, yeah, I'm not adamantly opposed like I was the last piece. I I just wish it was better.
Jake, was there any? I just have one question. There any other offering of any other kind of method to do this rather than just the weighted method?
So it was originally talked about doing everything as a weighted method. I was very, very against that. I think that the very smart people at WAC found the happy middle ground with making it a weighted voting for the two policy priorities from the larger counties. That's that's the only thing that the weighted voting goes into. And then, and then the the rural counties, every, it's one, one person, one vote, right? Which then gives a definitely awaited voting, awaited vote for the rural counties. And then there's the all counties, if it if it's a policy procedure that all counties. Where it gets a little interest, interesting is the policy priorities of the large counties take preference. So they get first dibs on it. And then it goes to rural counties. And then it goes to all counties. And in the language, it says that none of the priority preferences can contradict. And trying to piece that apart, how that actually works and gameplay that out is really interesting. So how that would likely work out is the large, the only thing we can think of at the time that I could think of is to say the large counties want to change the percentage that we can raise property taxes to CPI or three percent, and they set that as their top priority. And we take a vote on it and they use their weighted voting to put that as a policy. Then that, because that's a policy, then the all counties or small counties wouldn't be able to set that as that's actually what we don't want. That's not the only thing I can think of that that would have an impact.
Not to interrupt, but you finally, you got to exactly what my concern was. By having it this way, they can use their ranked voting to make sure they push their ideals on the rest of us with WAC pushing policy that two-thirds of the the WAC board might be opposed to. But they use their ranked voting to say that WAC is in favor even when the majority of us aren't. But then when we want to push something, we gotta have an eighty-five percent vote to get it pushed. Kind of a, it's just, it just smells bad.
How that works though is we have a do no harm clause. So there's kind of like a veto in which somebody can say, hey, while I understand where you're coming at, that's actually gonna harm small counties. You know, something that I would think of that would that would work that way is to say the large counties want to move forward with this, what we were talking about at eleven o'clock today. And they're like, we want to move forward with standards that will set caseload standards. And they've got plenty of attorneys and that's where all the attorneys live. Then we, as the rural counties, can say, actually, that will harm us. It will cost us money that we don't have and we don't have the attorney. And so we would raise that veto flag.
Okay, I did not read that in there that, so you're saying even if they wanted to use their ranked voting to put something on the WAC Priorities Board and they outvoted us, so it got on there. What would it take for rural counties and where do I find that in the document that we have some way to veto their?
The, the, the thing where it's at in there is I think it's kind of like the mission or the vision or whatever. And it, we have three key rules that we have to follow and do no harm is one of them. And so we had long conversations about, you know, like, how are we gonna set our policies and priorities? And so one of those, sorry, policies, feeling good, one of those policies is do no harm. And so that's what gives that ability for someone to raise their hand and say, do no harm. How it ended up turning out was there were so I I said, I did not vote against or for the project proposal. I vote, I abstained asking if we could push the vote off until our next meeting or our next special meeting before we move into the thing because I wanted to bring it back to talk to you. Because while I think this is fair and and we likely had the ability because we're appointed and this is internal policies for setting the LSC standards. I also know that we are also talking about ranked voting at the board level, which, you know, slippery slopes are exactly what they are. And I didn't want to set up a prob, whatever it's called. I didn't want to set a a standard, that's not the right word, of moving forward where both of you, one, either both of you are like, no, no, we don't want to do this. We don't, we don't even want to talk about ranked voting. So I I just want to let you know, it was me, Commissioner McKinney, and I think a commissioner from Callis County. We all have, one voted no and two of us abstained, three of us abstained, one voted no and everybody else voted yes. So we're moving into the legislative process. But to get back to where you were talking about, Commissioner Christopher, we are actually working on setting our legislative priorities well in advance of the fall. We're talking about setting our priorities. You know, in the
That's the purpose of the summer conference.
Well, there's a, there's a retreat where we will, where LSC will work to set the the policy and priority. Which is why, you know, I brought it up two weeks ago that we as a county need to set our policies and what we want to see done this next legislative session. Both for LSC and WAC, so I'm not going up there blind, but also for our own county and constituents. Cause at WAC, I'm representing WAC. I'm not necessarily representing Clickatack County.
So back to this policy statement, I I kind of understand the abstention. I would understand a yes vote. I would understand a no vote. If I was in your shoes, I would be very torn as well. Yeah, I did read your, the section in there that that the do no harm, but it said priorities should meet the following criteria. It doesn't say they shall meet. So I I guess I I'm just, I've seen Olympia, I've seen King County. I'm just so worried about what this is gonna turn into because if you think this isn't a power grab, it's a power grab. But maybe if this gets passed, they'll finally
I guess the bigger issue here is King County's already left, so we don't got to worry about that. Snohomish and Pierce were talking about walking away and this is the middle ground in order to try to make them happy.
So you don't think even with this, King County's coming back?
I think King County will want to see changes in the bylaws and changes at the
They want full control. Well, that's, that's totally based on, it's not the the county commissioners, the person that runs everything there is the county executive and he makes all of the decisions and he's the one that doesn't like WAC's structure. So it's it's one person ruling over all counties is what it is.
I under, I understand where King County may have taken, you know, their county, which they can, and they took a position to support legislation and hired a lobbyist. And then they spent three hundred thousand dollars on WAC and WAC was actively opposing what they were spending money on and they were using their own money to do it. I understand, you know, there's two sides to every story and I understand where King County was coming from. I, the the way I was trying to find the middle ground with LSC was, you know, we don't actually have to oppose something because what happens when you oppose it is you don't no longer have a seat at the table for trying to fix the legislation to make it better in many instances. And WAC has to represent everyone and WAC needs to be there at the table saying, hey, make these changes, make these changes. This will, this will make it better. You know, we know we're not gonna win. We know we don't have the the legislative horsepower from our legislators in order to put, you know, you know, that bad bill. And WAC is where we get a lot of our horsepower behind. And so a lot of it comes down to just making sure that WAC is not opposed. But instead it is, has concerns and is trying to make it better for all counties. And it was really good, positive conversations with LSC about that, trying to ensure that that everyone knows. You know, we, we're there to represent WAC and WAC represents the counties, not the county constituents. They actually represent the county and a lot of that comes down to money and policies and
And that's what I'm saying. I think most of the entities in WAC do a very good job of not, most of the commissioners, both Democrat and Republican, check the politics at the door and do a very good job on middle ground and achieving and pushing for legislation that helps us all. And leaving all the political garbage at the door. My worry with this is this creates an avenue where a few counties can start pushing political ideologies and and I could be wrong. I don't know that there's a better fix, so I'm not gonna, you know, critique it to death. I'm just overly cautious and optimistic. I do very much appreciate the update. Appreciate the packet so I can read it ahead of time and get in front of it, but yeah, it is, it is what, so I'm, I'm good. I don't know if Chair has any comments she would like to make before we move on. But I'm good and thank you.
Go ahead, Jake, did you?
I re, I recall, Commissioner Christopher, you came back last year in much the same situation where you'd said that you had voted no on something. I can't remember what it is off the top of my head. Because you did not have a chance to confer with the board and I wanted to continue that tradition. So that's, that's why I abstained from the vote.
Well, and I appreciate that, Jake, and and not being there. And I know there's been a lot of work going into this because of what happened last year. I would support the decision that you make with us. If it's, this is the best we can get out of that. And it sounds like a lot of work went into different ways to bring it down through the ranks as the votes go. Just making sure that hold harmless clause and that veto can work would be important to me.
Yeah, with that stated, with the update, I would like to to get it put on our agenda along with our other elected to, we need to start having that conversation now if we want to be successful next year for any legislation that we would like to see moving forward. And so at the next workshop to at least start that discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, anything else on that subject? Are we?
No.
Okay.
Of course, it'd been beat.
Two years in a row now, poor thing. Poor person that has to deal with it. So under unfinished business, I I actually asked for the coroner position discussion to come back up. Last week when we had our conversations, we kind of, for me, ended in a no end on this discussion. I believe the board knows that we want to go forward with an elected position. We know that if we're going to move forward, we've got to create that department and the budgets and everything that wrap around it. The board's decision was, correct me if I'm wrong, to ask the auditor to move forward to get that in the election cycle so we can begin this position next year.
Point of clarification?
Yes.
That, that, for the record, that's not what I remember. So you might ask the other commissioner, that's what he
What do you remember?
I remember I wanted it elected and the other two needed more information and did not decide elected or appointed. Commissioner Anderson needed to see the legal findings from the prosecutor and the Attorney General and the Secretary of State and all that kind of stuff from Heather, which she provided. But he was not willing to make a decision without all of the information. And I believe you were at the same regard. So I do not believe any decision had.
Okay, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Anderson because of what my recollection was, was we did come to resolve at one time during this lengthy discussion. I remember stating that I would I remember stating that I would, uh, like to see an appointed, uh, until we move through 2016, which would give, uh, the auditor time to get it on the election cycle. But I would approve standing with the board for an elected position because I believe I heard that my seatmates wanted an elected position.
And so is it your, just so we can be crystal clear to everybody? I, I don't even want to put words in your mouth. What is it you would like the board to agree with? And I have a feeling that you're gonna get agreed with, but I want to make sure it's crystal clear.
If I may, can I give an update, um, before we try to ask for agreement? That seems like we're getting a little bit ahead. Um, I took this up to WASAC, um, because of these issues. The, the last message we had from the, um, auditor was that the auditor would not put this on the ballot, the, the, the ballot, um, for an election for 2025. Um, I, I want to make sure that that was what all three of us heard and to start with there.
Yes, sir. That's what I heard.
Okay, so I took that to the, the evening meeting, um, for all the county commissioners. And I gotta say, there's probably no place I've ever been that's, that's better than that night meeting when everybody brings forward their problems. And I said, this is the situation and everybody just kind of looked at me like, well, what do you mean? That doesn't make any sense. Of course, you know, there's gonna be a vacancy. Why couldn't you put it on the election? Uh, and I said, well, this is, this is the way it's going. And so, um, the, the advice that I had had is that if you, if we, uh, really would like and, and again, this is from other commissioners, if we would really like to make it an elected position. We would pass an ordinance that would direct the auditor to put it on the ballot at that time, as were the legislative authority. Um, I know that, I mean, that's in essence playing in somebody else's sandbox. And it's not a pretty sight and it's not a direction that, that, that I want to go. Um, you know, pushing against somebody else who has strong feelings, um, knowing that, uh, we're all kind of, you know, uh, an agreeance. I did read everything that the, that the auditor put forward. I had a different take on it from the auditor. Um, but I will also mention, um, we had all, all, an actual gr, longer conversation about what other small counties are doing. And two, at least two, well, technically four, um, of the counties, um, are making it an appointed position. None of them are making it an elected position. Um, and I said, well, why is that? And, um, it came up that, uh, there was a, an election on the coast in which, uh, somebody got elected who had no experience or background in what they're doing. And it is causing a huge turmoil, um, over there. And they went, well, we don't want that to ever possibly happen with the coroner position. Um, and so, and I guess a lot of these counties had talked about it. Remember, I've only been on ledge steering for a while. But a lot of these counties have been talking back and forth about it, um, for a while. And so mo, is all of those small counties are moving into an appointed position. Um, and multiple of them are, one county will do the appointment and then they will do an MOA. Um, or some other instrument, um, so that another county can use the same coroner. Um, in order for them to save dollars, uh, you know, their, their dollars are running anywhere from 250 to 350 for the department. And other small counties, they just, they don't have the dollars. And so what they're gonna do is share a corner. Um, and that is happening again, uh, uh, at least four counties are doing that. And remember, there weren't actually that many counties, um, under 40,000 that this was actually going to occur. So I just wanted to give you guys an update for the conversation about what other people are doing around the state. Um, and I know if, if you'd like to talk to anyone, I know Adams and Franklin, um, counties are doing, um, the same, you know. And then Pacific County, um, I can't remember if Pacific's doing it with Waukaiakum or the one to the north. I don't know.
So my question, my question is with the education that you've gained. Um, I believe you had preferred elected. Are you suggesting you would change your position and think about appointed at this time then?
So I had, I would, I, I very much, um, understand where Commissioner Christopher is coming from, uh, not wanting anybody to come to the Board of County Commissioners and be like, your, your coroner is, didn't, made a wrong choice on this death, you know, the, the autopsy, the death. The termination of death. I totally get that. I don't, I never want to have to deal with that. You're dealing with people in their absolute worst time of their life and then taking it in front of a Board of County Commissioners is terrible. Um, I also understand where, um, the uh, Pacific and the other counties are coming from, not wanting to have someone be elected. Um, that, that A has no business doing it and B could cause all sorts of problems. Um, that, they definitely put a burr under my skin in terms of being scared of that.
Yeah, but I, I would argue that every position in every county has potential of that being the case. We've had people running for sheriff in this county with absolutely no law enforcement background, so. You know, that's
Whoops, we're losing. Commissioner Anderson, we're losing, yeah.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Sorry, um, no, I, and I agree with you, uh, Commissioner Christopher, elections have consequences. Um, absolutely. Um, at the same time, I also, um, I respect the auditor. I respect the auditor's, uh, opinion. Uh, I may not agree with it. I also don't want to start a fight, uh, with the auditor. Um, because in essence, that's what we would do if, if we pass an ordinance in which we direct the auditor to put it on the uh, ballot and then the auditor says, I'm not gonna do it. And then, then you have to go to Superior Court and the auditor would have to take us to Superior Court. It, it would not be a pretty position, um, uh, in a year like this. Uh, so, uh, my my always trying to find the compromise in the middle ground on this, uh, was to, uh, make it a appointed position. And, uh, in essence, a department had, uh, department. Um, and then with the intent that for the 2026, so then it would then transfer over to an elected position once we got it up and running. And the, the right number of staff. The other piece is, um, I think we have a little bit more due diligence to do with Skamania County. Uh, knowing that, um, they don't have a, a plan yet. I talked with uh, with their commissioner up there. And, uh, and he said he was interested in sitting down and seeing if that's something that would work for both counties. Um, I know SRS is likely going away and Skamania County is going to be in a huge bind. And anything that we can do to save both counties some dollars moving into, uh, likely, uh, trying years would be good. Um, having it be a appointed position, um, uh, for a year would give us the chance to potentially create what is, uh, what could be a coroner district. Where it would be an election over both counties. Um, and, and seeing if that's a possibility. That actually came up, um, through the discussions at WASAC at the evening meeting as a possibility for these other counties as well that are looking to do two counties under one coroner. And, you know, these, like, these are big counties too.
Mr. Christopher, do you have a comment?
I, I, I haven't changed. I still stand on it should be elected. But I also, out of respect for the auditor, understand her position on the matter, on getting it on the ballot this year. Uh, I have no intentions of challenging her opinion. Um, so with that, my take would be it would need to be appointed and go on the ballot in 2026. Um, the whole partnering with Skamania County is, is a whole nother matter. Uh, entirely, which would entail more FTEs, whether you could find personnel that want to do it. Um, the cost, I believe we were already kind of shown wouldn't be a cost savings, would be a cost savings to them, but not necessarily a cost savings to us. Um, but kind of irrelevant, I think, multiple. I mean, the first question is, is this board ready to go to the courts? And try to force the auditor to put it on the ballot? And it doesn't sound like the answer is yes. Anybody can correct me if I'm wrong. With that, sounds like we need to move forward with appointed and figure it out. Now, I, I would I don't believe it would be wise to jump into both feet and do a two-county appointment in the first year. Um, I mean, it's kind of like stepping up the mental health department in three months. Um, I, I think it would behoove this county to take care of itself until it makes sure it gets its ducks in a row. And worry about itself for the first years of appointment. And if that goes okay, then we can reach out to see about a joint effort. But I think it's very dangerous to try to do it all in one shot.
Yeah, and, and I think this is just perfect because what I was looking for today was a path forward. And I think we've landed on the correct thing. We're able to move forward, uh, do an appointed position. And now we know we're going to have to have workshops, design this position, design the department, have financial sit in with us. Uh, get to the bottom of that and then have those harder questions with documentation of can we wrap this into two counties right now or not? Uh, so this gives us an open door at least to start that process.
Right, and that's what, that's kind of what I'm asking for is as we move forward, we plan this as appointed. I think you gotta figure out the appointment piece and those employees and then ask them if they feel like driving to Skamania on a Sunday afternoon. Um, because they may, they may not be too interested in that. And I think we also want to get them potentially onboard before January 1st of next year. Um, even if it's a week or two, just so they can make up their office and whatnot, so.
Right. So do we need a motion to move forward or this is just a policy?
As long as there's consensus and we all know what direction we're going, I think we're okay.
And so what workshop are we gonna get it on? Sure, we got space. For, um, what the coroner position looks like. Uh, timeframe, yep, yep, come to the table with the beginning conversations of what that looks like. With the idea that we'll be getting it done so we can fit it into our budget season this year.
So, um, I, I had a lot of other counties that are like, you know, that have gone through the changeover that are like, um, we'd be happy to have you talk to our coroner to find out, you know, how we're doing it, you know. How, in, in most all of them, except for the big counties, they use the, the, the deputy coroners that are contractors in essence, that are, that are the undertakers. And then they've got, you know, a coroner that's kind of the, the manager of it. But a lot of that is taken up, um, by the contractors, uh, what, so that the coroner can go on vacation and everything else.
Yeah, so
Yeah, and so there's, I think, a lot of things that we can do. But the first thing we need to do is backdate it and say, hey, we want to get somebody hired in December at the latest so that they're ready to go for January and we have the location and everything else set up. And then we have the agreements in place, um, so that the, the contractors that hopefully we currently have would like to continue being contractors and we can get them, uh, continue to be deputized. Um, and then get, make sure that they're still gonna get paid and everything like that. So we just gotta backdate it from now, um, we're not, you know, it's not as bad as we were sitting. Uh, but again, it's, it's a small department, so it won't be overly difficult.
Right, and if there's examples and documentation, bring them to workshop, that's awesome. Any suggestions? We don't have to recreate the wheel. We can use other things that, that are functioning. That's great. And so maybe we can
Government is the one place that, that cheating is acceptable and stealing off of others.
So cheating. Great, and I think staff added it to our workshop. So any research you can find, bring it in.
Um, I don't know if, um, our, our current, uh, coroner, uh, Prosecutor Cannell is online. Um, I know we added this. I don't know if he saw it, but um, he's also has, you know, years and years and years of experience and I would hope that we can get his help designing and building it. Um, you know, he knows what it takes and how many hours and everything else. So, um, please make sure that he is invited to that workshop. Or staff.
Good.
And I don't see him online. I don't know if he's online. I can't see if anybody's online.
I would call for him if he wants to speak.
Yeah, I don't see.
Wouldn't put him on the spot if he, if he is on there.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, any part, any partners?
That's all I had for, for an update.
Okay, so anything else for anybody else today? That was last on our agenda.
Um, a quickie on my thinking of the, uh, public roundtable. Public forum thing. My original thought was that we can quickly, maybe talk about some topics that are pertinent in our districts that might alleviate some questions and or spur some questions. Uh, bridge, internet, airport, solar panels, uh, whatnot. We can each pick a couple of topics to give a brief update to the crowd, however big that crowd is. Uh, and then, um, like I said, take questions that are specific questions. And not, you know, five minutes of rambling with 27 questions in the rambling. Um, so that we can ask, answer as many questions as possible. But then also limit the number of questions from a single individual, so they can't, um, spend three hours and nobody else gets a chance. So that was my original thinking of the way I want to word this up, but I'm open to suggestions if you guys don't like that.
Are you talking about the in-person one or online?
In person. I'm letting you hear logistics of the online.
Okay. Um, I, we're gonna be doing it in Goldendale, so it's the central part of the county. Um, I have no problem, you know, giving an update on the boards that, that I'm on. Um, you know, it's kind of like, just like going on the radio, you know what I mean? Other than we each talk about the boards that we're on and the projects we're working on. Um, I would, I would have no problem, you know, I can talk about the bridge and behavioral health.
I figured those would be your two. But I also think the majority of the public's gonna want to know where we're at on the solar thing. Um, it, it wouldn't hurt to discuss updating Title 15, Title 16, Title 12. Um, kind of situations like that and then any other ideas you have. That, that just, you know, give a three-minute kind of update on any other project that somebody might want to know about. Um, and that's what I was thinking. If you, yours is probably gonna be the most long-winded with the bridge and mental health.
Well, the bridge is definitely giving me mental health issues.
Uh, hand in hand. So anyway, that's what I was thinking. I'll write something up, uh, some kind of idea for an outline of it. Based on that and I'll submit it to you guys and see how we go from there.
Thank, thank you for the update, Commissioner Christopher. That gives me a thought on, uh, you know, one of the awful ways, the ways we can do the online, um, town hall.
Yeah, that was my thought. If we ask, answer half the questions before they answer, ask them. Uh, they might get some clarification on how things are going and that might answer the Uh, they might get some clarification on how things are going and that might answer their questions without them having to get up.
Well, what we found is it didn't, um, it led them to ask better questions.
Correct. Um, if we can educate them before they comment, they might comment in an educated fashion. Um, the clerk has a statement or question or something she wants to have.
Okay. So I have for March twenty first workshop, I have, uh, a refund policy work, uh, with the planning department and building department. Um, a website discussion with all the departments under the commissioners. Uh, the coroner's position and then a discussion on legislation moving forward. Is that what?
One thing I would like to potentially add to uh, future board meetings and workshops is when a, uh, commissioner adds something on either a workshop or an agenda that we put their name by it. So they can take the lead on the discussion of the topic. If that makes sense to everybody and doesn't offend anybody.
Works for me.
I, I, I think it helps because of how many times we've been like, well, who put this on here?
Right. That's what I'm, that's where I'm going. If, if anything, and we can't figure out who put it on there, we can just blame Leanne. It'll be fine. She did it. She brought it up today and we transferred it to.
I'll take the.
Uh, oh, since, since we're just having discussion. So one of the things that I came across, uh, ledge, um, and at the legislature is, um, the term reading. So when you have, um, uh, an ordinance or legislation, it requires two, two readings. And it goes, I think it goes all the way back to common law. And, um, what you, and so that is the, the reason why you always hold a public hearing over for the next week. Because then that creates the second reading. There's a way you can do two readings at once, but it's very specific language. And, um, I just don't want us to get, get, uh, sideways. And so I wasn't, I was not trying to push against you, Commissioner Christopher, in any way, um, shape or form with your, I was just trying to make sure that, um, that we, we follow. And, you know, we've always done it that a way.
I, I appreciate that. I just asked that next time you would, uh, make the second motion before you let me make the second. If you wanted differently, don't, don't ask for the same motion over again. Um, offer, offer to give the motion in your own words and I will gladly accept you doing it.
Um, I, I, I'm sorry. I didn't, uh, I don't, sorry, I'm, I'm out of gas today. Uh,
You've been talking up a storm. Hey, what's going on? You're far more talkative today than you are in person.
Yeah, whatever. Uh, what I meant to say is.
Do you agree though?
Uh, what I meant to say is you, I didn't, didn't mean to, to have you make the same motion again if, if I made it sound that way. I was, was happy to make the motion the second time, but. Yeah. And I know I had a lot of updates today, but it was a really productive, uh, trip to Olympia, I must say. Um, it, it, I wish we had those more throughout the year because when we have issues, there's not an issue that we have that somebody else hasn't come across.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's true.
I, I would agree. And I can tell you, I very much not so miss the legislation day of going to the Hill and talking to representatives as much as I miss the, um, night before. Um, camaraderie where you can, um, bounce questions off walls and hear what other people are dealing with. And you realize, oh my God, my county is not anywhere near as bad as most of these counties. So it's encouraging.
Or you're not alone.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Conversations, uh, with a lot of them, but, um, I'm more outside the loop now and it, it doesn't feel good.
Well, I, I hope, I hope both of you feel that I'm trying to include you in on all the legislation and as much of the discussion that occurs. Um, what goes on up there? Cause it, it does, it all does touch on us.
I think you had an easy session this year anyway, because it's an election year. Gun bills and all that, defund the police stuff and all that that we may have wanted to test, uh, testify on separately. Although I did get an email from some professor that wanted me to be a part of his defund the police focus group. I didn't answer.
Uh, so, so the, the WAC, um, they, they got all of their priorities done the first half, uh, the first year of the, of the biennium. And so it was a really weird year because we were just responding to it. And all the gun bills and everything like that, you know, that's not a WAC thing.
Right.
Um, yes, those things were passing. Yes, they passed. Um, uh, but WAC didn't have a part of it. And so that was, that was really important to make sure because there, you know, definitely there are commissioners that want to use WAC as their personal lobbying firm. Um, but that was where we were creating those very clear boundaries that, look, it has to be, it has to deal with the legislative authority. It has to, it has to deal with multiple counties. It can't be policies on gun control or anything like that, or, or abortion or anything. That's not WAC's position. WAC's position is to look after the actual county functions. And that was a really positive.
Commissioner Anderson, are we going to have to gavel you to end this meeting or?
He's lonely today. He's at home in lonely.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, would you entertain a motion to adjourn or is any other discussion needed by the board?
None by me. Mr. Anderson?
If you're going to make the motion to adjourn, make sure, uh, you mention the meeting tomorrow, please.
Feel free. If you don't like my motion, go for it.
Go ahead.
Special meeting.
What is the time of that thing anyway? Yeah, you don't have.
You, you weren't going to do it, were you?
No, I wasn't going to mention the time. Um, with that, I would move that we adjourn today's meeting noting that we do not have any workshops scheduled. Uh, but we do have a case of PETA meeting scheduled for tomorrow at one o'clock.
Okay.
Motion in a second. No discussion, all those in favor?
Yay.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes.
I figured yay and I, it's kind of the same.